Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for attending today. This is the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for December 14th, 2001, which I'd like to call to order at this time. Have a little special holiday treat for you all today. First of all, I've found a veteran in our ranks here today who I've asked to give the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'm gonna give you a little information about that. And so after we've done that, you know, if you wish, you may wish to remain standing, because I have asked as a kind of a reoccurring favor, every time the Board has elected me Chair, I've asked the clerk of the courts to come in and sing for us. So she's brought her very good friend, Kim Ecclestone, today, and they are going to give us a rendition of "God Bless America." So afterwards, we have that for us as well. So let me tell you a little bit about Denise Lynn. She's a veteran of the United States Air Force. By the way, if you don't know, Denise is our county attorney. Denise served the United States Air Force both on active duty and in the reserves for six years after graduating high school. Denise attained the rank of E5 Staff Sergeant, I may just call you Staff Sergeant from there, during her career as a Guidance and Control Specialist with the 816th Aircraft Maintenance Unit and 834th Aircraft Generation Squadron with the 1st Special Operations Wing at Hurlberg Field, Florida. While serving in the 1st Special Operations Wing, Denise's unit participated in Operation Just Cause, which resulted in the capture of Panamanian General Manuel Noriega. Just Cause was the largest and most complex combat operation since the Vietnam War. Denise's unit provided the preponderance of aerial firepower and airlift support to the Special Operations Task Force. The wing provided Spectre gunships from the 16th Special Operations Squadron and Combat Talon aircraft from the 8th Special Operations Squadron. Denise was awarded the Air Force Commendation Medal, with which her commander stated, quote, "The distinctive accomplishments of Sergeant Lynn while serving her country reflect credit upon herself in the United States Air Force," end quote. So with that, I'm very happy to ask Ms. Lynn to do her invocation and the pledge, and then Angela and Kim will do our song. So, thank you.
If you care to join me, let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us all together today safely, and also thank you for giving us such a beautiful day. Lord, we know there are many in our country and in our community with heavy hearts today following the horrible storms that we experienced, the horrible tornadoes. Lord, we ask that you please be with those recovering from those storms, and also the rescue efforts that are going on in the aftermath of those storms. Lord, we also know that during this holiday season, there are many with heavy hearts, those that may have lost loved ones. We lift those up to you today, Lord, and ask that you please provide comfort for them. As always, we would like to please ask that you look after our first responders, our men and women in uniform, and please bring them home safely to their families. Also, please be with their families as they are away on assignment during the holidays. Those are extremely difficult times for families that are left behind. Lord, we entrust our elected officials to do what's best for us. Today, as these elected officials make decisions that will affect all of us, we ask that you give them wisdom and discernment, that they consider all sides of the issues before making their decisions. Lord, thank you. Please help us remember our blessings in the Lord's name. Amen.
Amen.
Now, let's face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like us to remain standing, ma'am?
I believe so. Yes.
God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with a light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
Can I also have a round of applause for our veteran, and thank you for your service? Thank you very much, ladies, I appreciate it. There you go. There's my Christmas present to you guys, so I can just get back now.
That was really nice, thank you.
Okay, let's see if we can move on with the roll call now.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 14th day of December, 2021. In attendance are Chairman Ronald D. Kitchard Jr., First Vice Chair Ruthie Schleba, Second Vice Chair Holly Davis, Commissioners Scott Carnahan and Jeff Cannory, County Administrator Randy Oliver, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamondlin.
Thank you very much. I believe the agenda, we just have one addition, which I added Item G2, which is a discussion about changing an October Board meeting. And I asked Mr. Oliver to put that on the agenda so we could talk about it later, and other than that, that's the only changes I see.
Mr. Chair, I want you to go ahead and pull K1, and I'm gonna put that on the first meeting in January.
Oh, okay, pull K1 per Commissioner Carnahan's request.
Please, thank you, sir.
Okay, so delete K1. Okay, any other changes? Okay, seeing them, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the agenda with those changes.
Does that move?
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Carnahan, a second by Commissioner Cannard. Any Board discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Next is the consent agenda. We have Items B1 through B9. What's the Board's pleasure?
Chair, take the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Okay, so I heard Commissioner Carnahan first on the motion, and Commissioner Cannard on the second. Any discussion from the public, any comments on any item on the consent agenda? Board, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. I believe we are now up to Item C1, Proclamations.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve Item C1.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Cannard makes the motion, a second by Commissioner Davis. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Doug, would you, are we reading that into the record?
Yes, sir.
Would you do that, please?
The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation in celebration of Clinton C. Burns Senior 100th Birthday. Whereas Clinton C. Burns was born January 2nd, 1922, just outside of Hernando to Lennon and Ada Burns. And whereas Clinton attended school in Little Church in South Deneal through the 8th grade, he worked with the Barge Canal Lock and Phosphate Mining. In 1942, at the age of 20, he was drafted into the Army during the early stages of the US involvement in World War II. After basic training in Camp Claiborne in Louisiana, he was stationed in Southampton, England, before landing on beaches of Normandy onboard an LST 542-class tankship. After D-Day, he served in Belgium and Germany. And whereas during World War II, Clinton served with the 3rd Army 364th Engineering Combat Regiment under the command of General George S. Patton as a truck driver with the famed Red Bull Express. The Red Bull Express, made up of mostly African-American soldiers, was a supply truck convoy that were instrumental in the Allies' drive through France. At the close of the war, Clinton was deployed back to the United States on July 4th, 1945. He was honored to be discharged from the Army as a technician in 5th grade and received five campaign medals for his service, including Normandy, Cherbourg, Ashland, and the Battle of the Bulge. And whereas he married Ado Adella Burns in 1950, to whom he married for 63 years until her death in 2013. They raised eight children, Lloyds, Christine, Linton, and Clinton, Reginald, Althea, Darrell, and Mavis. He has 26 grandchildren and 19 great-grandchildren. And whereas Clinton worked for 15 years with the Atlantic Coastline Railroad in the phosphate industry and retired from the Florida Power Corporation after 16 years in 1983. He currently serves as Deacon and member of Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church. He has been an honorary police officer with the Denealin Police Department for eight years. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, congratulate Clinton C. Burns Senior on his 100th birthday on January 2nd, 2022, signed by all five County Commissioners.
Thank you, Doug. And we'll give him a round of applause, even though he's not here. Perhaps he can watch on TV.
Yes, sir.
And that's, as Doug told me, that they had to really cut down his resume. That's just only a few things that were wrong, so congratulations on that. Okay, we are now ready to move on to open to the public. Anyone who wishes to address the Board, I'd invite you up, ask you to give your name, your address, where you live, and fill out a green card for the clerk, before or during or after. We're gonna give you, the timekeeper here is gonna give you three minutes unless you're representing a group with your letter of approval on file with the clerk, which if so, tell the Second Vice Chair, and she will give you five minutes to speak. So, welcome, sir.
Hi, I'm Dennis Ryland. I'm from 6170 South Sunway Point, Floral City, the center of the Withlacootee State Trail. And I'd like to speak today about the proposed Fort Island Trail project, some many positive things I've seen about that over the years. Full disclosure, I'm a member of the Hernando Citrus Metropolitan Planning Organization Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I'm also a director and past president of the Friends of the Withlacootee State Trail. I'm not here representing them, here today, I'm speaking for myself. And also, I'd like to say that my main concern with the project is the resiliency of the project and the potential source of funding, and that's something maybe you can explain later when you propose it. I know this is just the open part. In October 26th, 2017, a meeting of the Metropolitan Planning Organization Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee was presenting, from Kimberly Horn, the engineering presentation for the Fort Island Trail Plan. When the engineer was asked about the possibility that, like roads, that the trail would be underwater, he said, yes, they'd have to engineer the trail for being underwater. After the presentation, the B-PAC Committee also discussed it, and Steve Diaz, Executive Director of the Hernando Citrus County MPO, stated that this project would cost $25 million or more, and I think we've seen that in the papers, you've described before. He also stated that due to the lack of resiliency, the Sun Trail Funds probably would not be able to fund it. Some things that I've noticed as we go through these projects, they come whether sidewalks or trails or trying to connect, get connectors done. The MPO B-PAC has placed the Fort Island Trail on a low priority on their list. I know that that changed later as it went through other committees, but the B-PAC Committee had lowered it down to maybe something like 17 instead of a 4 or 7. Later, that popped back up again. The MPO scoring sheet did not justify that placement. The priorities rank local locations near schools, as we know, transportation corridors, preventable accidents, of which I believe, word of mouth, there was like one accident maybe in the last 10 years on there. I don't know if it was a daytime or nighttime bicycle ride around that Fort Island road. It also deals with the economic disadvantage, population density, and shovel-ready projects, ready funding sources, as we know, that what's available, environmental impacts, and right-of-way issues if they're already solved. This trail has no seams, just like the Bay Trail. I love to go up the Bay Trail, it goes down to the water, beautiful scenery there, which doesn't have a road attached to it, of course, it's just a trail. It's limited as far as shade for some of the nine miles, there's no services, no water, no air conditioning or respite from the heat. A weekend food truck, as I understand it, does present itself at the end. We currently have sea level risk with it, there's a history of flooding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the comments. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Hi, I'm Bruce Titus. I'm trying to, hi Ruthie. I'm trying to get a wheelchair mat, the Mobi mat, out on Fort Island Trail Beach. Five years ago, in 2016, I was on Citrus Ave on a 20-inch bicycle, and I got hit from behind by a 60 mile an hour car. That was maybe three, four months after graduating high school. This county is pretty accessible, it's just, you know, I can no longer get on the beach. When I was a kid, I always went on the beach, the family would go watch the sunset and everything like that. I think, you know, it would help me and a lot of other citizens in this county out having the wheelchair mat out on the beach. It would bring in a lot of, you know, tourism. We have tourists come here all the time, but having that accessible beach, I think it would help out the county a whole bunch, you know, extra tax dollars and the whole nine yards. And I have an essay that I made in high school, it was a proposal essay for a persuasive essay, and my professor, she was like, you know what, you should try to get it done, and it was on the Mobi mat. And I did fairly well on the essay, whenever I'm ready, I made each of you a copy of it. But I feel like having the Mobi mat out on the beach, it'll benefit everybody. There's a lot of people that can benefit from it. A girl I went to school with, she has a disabled child who can't walk, and she messaged me, and she said, you know, there's gonna come a time when, you know, her kid gets too heavy to carry on the beach, and, you know, her child loves the beach. I think everybody should have access to the beach and not have to miss out for, let's say, you know, something that they had no control of, they didn't ask for it. It's like, I didn't ask for my accident, but I'm doing the best that I can, and I'm striving for the best. But, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you. If you wish, you can give those to the clerk or to Doug, and we'll make sure he gets them. Thank you. Also, folks, when you present to the Council, in case you haven't been here before, what we typically do is the Board listens to all public input and then they'll respond to them. Thank you very much for being here, appreciate it. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Leland Ship, Floral City. I just wanna, I'm here to support Bruce Titus. I nicknamed it the Bruce Titus Project. I've reached out, emailed to Mike Schumaker of the TDC. Mike is, with his generosity, has said he will purchase the mat itself, but I think...
Oh, my goodness, just fire me now.
Thank you for your time.
No, 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 no. Sorry for the interruption.
One of these days, I'll be competent running the time.
No biggie. But anyway, so I get bonus time, right?
Yes.
So Mike's gonna purchase the mat, but in talking with Bruce, I said, I think your vision needs to be a little bigger. And I discussed having the beach buggies provided also for anybody that wants to use that as a flotation device in the water. So I'm working with the TDC and Mike in discussing some of that, and I've also mentioned to Ruthie and talked to her a little bit, and she's a supporter of this project, I know. And I would just ask that y'all add this to your 1st January meetings' agenda, so that we can kind of get some finalization to this. The other side of that coin, I think that it will bring other people that are driving past Citrus to go to other beaches that are already accessible. I think it'd be a win-win for everybody, and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you being here. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
There you go. Sabrina Watson, good afternoon, Commissioners. I want to give a big shout-out, obviously, to Commissioners Schleba, Leland Ship, Mike Schumacher, for everything that they intend to do for Bruce Titus, I think it's wonderful. I actually wish to speak on another issue. On Item E16 today, we have a lease, another dollar lease for the county. I just want to remind everybody that on October 26th, 2021, there was discussion and a workshop of leased properties. All five Commissioners at that point in time were in agreement of disposing of all fire stations and vacant property, and staff was provided with instructions as such. There was also discussion with regard to policies for any properties that were being held on to, some type of qualification for people that may be interested in leasing those. There was discussion of nonprofits that make their way just fine in the real world, and I believe Friends of the Library was a very good example of that. In my opinion, all nonprofits should make their way in the real world. There was also discussion of CARES Act money for organizations with deep pockets. So I want to, one, present you with a very nice flyer that is produced by We Care Pantry. It has over 50 pages of nonprofit organizations that serve the public here in Citrus County. It's very nice, you can download it on their website. There are approximately 54 food organizations in this book, six pages of them. The organization that you're talking about today is the Community Food Bank of Citrus County. According to SunBiz, they are a Florida not-for-profit, not a nonprofit. The difference of that is in terms of their purpose, a nonprofit may be focused on social causes, while not-for-profits may involve special interests. According to the IRS, this particular group, their last IRS filing showed that they have $884,750 in yearly income. They have salaries or other compensation and employee benefits in the amount of $229,938. They have net cash assets or fund balances in the amount of $805,651. So my question to the Board is, is when we consider this lease, why would the citizens be forced, not asked, to subsidize a million-dollar special interest enterprise? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission, and Merry Christmas. I'm here to speak to you again on an issue I've come...
Can you give us your name, please?
John Labriola, sorry, and Vanessa. I'm here to speak to you again on a topic I've brought up a number of times before you, and that is the issue of LGBT propaganda displays in the library. As you all know, last June, there were LGBT propaganda displays in a couple of the libraries here in Citrus County, and these were not just displays of books, but as well as displays of actual slogans like "Love is Love," which means homosexuality is the equivalent of heterosexuality, Happy Pride Month, a number of clearly advocacy-related slogans in addition to the book displays. Now, last month, there was a citizen that came before you and announced that she had had a private meeting with Eric Head, the library director, where they worked out a deal where parents' concerns would be addressed. So I was curious to find out what the terms of that deal were, so I attended last week's meeting of the Library Advisory Board in the La Canto Government Building, and I was informed, we were informed, there were a number of us who attended, that in fact, there was no deal, that the chairwoman of the Board gave a little statement at the beginning, basically indicating that nothing would change. And then after the meeting, I spoke to Eric Head to get further clarification, and his words were that nothing would be different. So I asked him how that squares with what the Commissioners said back in July, when all of you pretty much said that you didn't want any ideological displays or lifestyle displays of any kind going forward next year, and he said, the words that he said were that that was basically a conversation that you all had from the dais. So essentially, what he indicated was that since there was no actual directive that was agended and voted upon by the Board, by the County Commission, that he was gonna go ahead and continue doing what he's been doing. So on behalf of the dozens of residents and citizens and parents who have come before you time and time again since June on this issue, I was asked to convey to you the request that you actually put this item on the agenda. I believe Chairman Kitchen mentioned that that might be where you have to end up, and it looks like, for this to be addressed, anyway. And so it looks like that's where we are. The ball is now in your court. Eric Head has indicated that he will continue to do what he's been doing, and in the absence of an actual directive that's agended by the Commission, that nothing will change. So again, on behalf of all the citizens and parents who have come before you time and time again, I'm asking you to, we're asking you to please, you said you wanted done, and put that item on the agenda, for it to be voted.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Does anyone else wish to address the Board at this time? Anyone else? Okay, we are going to close. Public input, Commissioners, anybody want to jump out there and get started, or you want me to stick my tube feet? Go ahead, Commissioner Schleba.
Bruce, I'm so glad to see you face-to-face, and I feel like I keep you up late at night texting, not texting, excuse me, going through Facebook, but you're an inspiration, and I know this started out for you wanting to see the sunset and get closer to the water, but what you've done is opened this up to so many people, and I don't even think you've touched upon the fact that I had twin babies, and trying to get them in that wagon down the beach was brutal, so there'll be many people that will be utilizing this, and to see the community come out for this has really been touching, and hopefully, you know, we can get the Commission to discuss and get the start of the DEP permits, and I know that pretty much you've got it almost paid for, if not more, so very proud of you, and again, blessings, and you're gonna be blessing so many people by your campaign to do this, so I appreciate that. And other than that, we've kind of discussed the other three items, so I'm pretty good.
Okay. Commissioner Carnahan, you have any comments?
I'm good right now.
Okay. Mr. Davis, any comments?
I would just like to pardon the phrase, ditto what Commissioner Schleba said about, I think that you're doing a magnificent thing, Mr. Titus, and I'm, where did she go? There you are, hello. And I really appreciate you driving this, because it is going to be a blessing for a lot of people, so thank you for that.
Commissioner Cannard, comments?
Yeah. Let's see, Mr. Ryland, I appreciate your comments about the Fort Island Trail project, but, you know, lower-than-ideal elevation properties or projects should be a concern, but not a deterrent to moving forward with them. If that were the case, we wouldn't do anything west of 19 or west of Meadowcrest with our new flood maps. It's a worthwhile project, eventually, we will get it funded, this is a start. There are certainly challenges with it, but overcoming those challenges ultimately will prove to be a very rewarding end product, I believe. So I'm looking forward to us getting started on it, and I'm looking forward to seeing it to completion at some point as well. The, let's see, the mat project, excellent. It doesn't surprise me that the community is stepping forward to support this and get the cost of the mat covered, so that's a good thing, that does not surprise me. And there is a difference with the Community Food Bank, my understanding is that we have one food bank in the county, that's this one, the Community Food Bank, and many, many pantries, that the pantries, many of them get their supplies from the one food bank. Great organization, they've done great things for those less fortunate in our community. I don't have a problem supporting, I do want us to get rid of our firehouses, as we've talked about, if we're not going to use them again, but if we're going to lease this one to them for the dollar lease, that's something I'm gonna support. That's all I've got.
That's it? Okay, I'll just back up, just a bit of housekeeping, it seems like the appropriate time to put it in. We don't take meeting, we don't take breaks during our meeting, so what we've done to make sure that we don't miss a single word is when we get up to, have to go to the restroom or whatever, we had a speaker installed in the restroom, so we can actually hear you no matter where we're at. So just don't, don't think just because we're not in the room, we don't hear what you're saying, so we do. I just want you to be aware of that.
It's a one-way speaker.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Good one.
And it is a speaker. Okay, so, but also, on the trail, all I'd say about the trail is, I believe this came up when I was still on, the MPO, I served with Commissioner Cannard on that, yeah, the MPO, just like many Boards have advisory boards, but the final decision of rankings are up to the MPO Board. And I remember Commissioner Cannard and I spearheaded the effort to raise that from number 14. We wanted to be number one, and what we did is we worked out a deal with Hernando so that we had alternating projects, because some of the school projects are great, but they're so expensive, and you can get state funding, and you need to wait for the state funding to do it, so to make a long story short... So to make a long story short, Citrus County decided we would make trails a top priority, and that's why we moved that up. So no, no disrespect to anybody on the committee, but again, this is one of those things, we can probably find a lot of reasons not to do it, but if we keep doing that, nothing will ever happen. And this is not a case where this money would go someplace else. I can tell you, the TDC allocated four hundred thousand dollars for this specific trail. It's not going to go anyplace else, so. Uh, let's see, so, and also the mat, I think the mat's a great idea. I think Mr. McGee, Gene McGee, brought this up originally at the TDC meeting to discuss it, and Mr. Shoemaker said he's already committed to pay for it. The only thing I ask is that they go through administration and work out all the details. I know there was concern about, does it need to be taken up at night? Does it get stolen? Who's going to be responsible for all that? So like everything else, it's a great idea, there's just some details that need to be worked out. So I, I don't think, I don't think any of up here is against it, we just want to make sure that, you know, all the bases are covered when that happens. The lease will be discussed under a special item, and Mr. Abriola, is that, I don't know if I'm saying your name right or not. You're exactly correct. What I asked Mr. Oliver is I said, can you get with Mr. Head and work this out? And so it's resolved, and if you can't, I'm going to have it come back under my item on the agenda so we have an official vote. And that's what I'm going to ask for today. So it appears that we haven't resolved this, so Mr. Oliver, would you put this on?
I can do that, but let, let me update you as to where it is. What I asked Mr. Head to do, and he said he would, is to take any of the displays that he was proposing for the next three-month or six-month period and seek the approval of the library board on what those displays are. To use the library board, who represents the broader interest of the community as appointed by this board, as a sounding block as it relates to, you know, what's appropriate. If you all want to get into, you know, regulating that more finely, that would be something that's your prerogative.
I don't know that we necessarily want to get relating it more finely, but I know we've had this discussion before where we think we've given direction, and then it comes back and says, well, no vote was taken, so therefore it doesn't count. I know we've had that discussion. So, and again, I mean, I, I just want it resolved. To me, when I said that one time, I said, let's, let's get with the library director, let's resolve it, it doesn't sound like it is, especially, again, I wasn't there, but if his, if his response was, nothing will change, that doesn't sound like what you just relayed to us, Mr. Oliver. So it would be good to know, I'll, I'll do this, I'll defer once again. If you think that, what I heard this board say is that we didn't want any, any lifestyle, any ideologies, any whatever picked one over another, and I think that's what I heard the board say. They weren't condemning or approving any particular one, we just didn't want to pick and choose as to which ones we thought were appropriate. And when you talk about getting into the weeds and micromanaging, to me, that's what's happening, okay? So in my mind, if, if it's going to continue to come back, the board should have a fully-vetted discussion of it, take a vote, give direction once and for all, and it's over with. I mean, that's what I'd like to do.
My suggestion then is bring it back and write what I call the rules and regulations y'all would wish them to adhere to.
Okay, well, let's do that. If you would, please just put it on the agenda and put it under my name, we'll, we'll discuss it, we'll vote on it, and it's done, okay? Just like we did with the sales tax. We'll, we'll discuss it, we'll, we'll debate it. Did you have a comment?
I'm just wondering who's going to create the policy. Are y'all going to create the policy from the dais?
Well, I don't know if we're going to create a policy. We want to discuss if we're going to have a policy first. I think we're going to have a kind of a discussion, do we need to change the directions? If so, what's it going to be, and who's going to be tasked with that? So this is the first step. Good point, but that's my, that's my feedback, so. We good with that, everybody? Anybody disagree? Okay, so we take care of that, and now it is one-thirty-four, we have a one-thirty time cert, and we're going to jump to real quick, it should be real quick, and then we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. I have down item H1, which is a public hearing for the FTA Section 5307 Fiscal Year 22 Funding. Mr. Oliver, Ms. Lynn, who's running it?
Yes, we conduct a, a public hearing as required by the Federal Transit Administration to obtain public input on the program of projects for Section 5307 Funding. B, approve and authorize the chairman or first vice chairman respectively to sign the resolution, the electronics submittal of an application for one million, eighty, eight thousand in Section 503, oh, 5307 Grant Fund through the FTA and the various systems that they have. And C would be authorize staff to submit a request for toll revenue credits to the State Department of Transportation, the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand for use as a match for FTA 530, the 5307 grant. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we would suggest you, you know, hold the public hearing.
I will, so I'll go ahead and do item A, we'll conduct a public hearing, then we'll leave it up to the pleasure of the board to deal with item B and C. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing for this. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or opposed to it? Is there anyone here to speak in favor or opposed to this proposal? And third and final time, anyone to speak in favor or opposed? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Board, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that we approve and authorize the chairman, let's see, to sign the resolution authorizing the electronic submittal of an application for one million, eight thousand in Section 5307 Grant Funding through the Federal Transit Administration. Transit Award Management System as shown on the Program of Projects and Electronic Execution and Submittal of the Related Contract for one million, eight thousand in Grant Funding for the Citrus County Transit System through the Federal Transit Administration, Section 5307, Grant for Physical Year 2022, and any amendments thereto after review with the county attorney.
And would that also include item C?
Item C also.
Okay, which is off.
Second.
Be happy to read through it if you want me to-
No, no, I just want to make sure we got, we got, thank you, appreciate the detailed-
Yes.
And I know the clerk, I know the clerk appreciates it, too, so, and that was second by Commissioner Schlebo. So we had the public hearing, we had a motion, a second, is there any further board discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Thank you, board. Now we're going to go back and pick up regular business under E1 bids. We have two of them. What's your pleasure with these?
Chair, I think you take E1, A and B.
Second.
Okay, so approve A and B made by Commissioner Carhan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on E1, A and B? Okay, commissioners, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Mr. Oliver, item E2, please.
Yes, approve budget transfers for gas, tax, utilities, and housing for physical years 21, 22.
Motion approved, item E2.
Second.
So Commissioner Kennard makes that motion, second by Commissioner Davis. Is any public comment? Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Item E3, please.
Yes, E3, adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution adopting amending Section 8 Rental Housing and Urban Development and State Housing Initiative Partnership Grant Budgets for Physical Year 21, 22.
Chair, move approval of E3.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Davis makes the motion, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on that motion? Board, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Item E4, please.
Yes, E4 is the long-awaited design build for the Fort Island Trail Multipurpose Path. There is a million dollars budgeted, the RFP essentially says, build what you can, tell us how much you can build for a million dollars, if it's ten feet, a thousand feet, or two miles. There, whoever would be successful in getting this contract would be responsible for the design, permitting, and then building it. If they design something and they can't get the permit, that risk is on them. So with that, I think it provides, follows the direction the board's given, and we are prepared to issue that if the board so approves.
I had two quick questions, if I could. One was, it says, after review at the county attorney's office and approval, have you had a chance to review this, Madam Attorney? This is the-
Yes.
-RFP you have?
Yes.
And you have no problems with it?
Correct.
Okay, and then my other question, be, Mr. Oliver, is the timeline. There's a timeline in here from request for proposal to board approval, but I may have missed it, but what, are we giving them a timeline to actually do the construction?
Not at this point, it's going to depend on the schedule that they bring back. This is just the timeline to receive proposals.
I meant not so much for construction, but will there be something that says, if we choose you, you must start construction within a certain period of time?
No, there will be, assuming that we have somebody that can perform on this, that would be developed in the final scope of work-
Okay, so if I read this right, if the board approves this, goes out for bids or for RFP, and then that'll come back to us, and we'll have to deal with what comes back and make any decisions from that, is that correct?
Yes, we'll provide recommendation, but that is correct.
Okay, board, what's, what would you like to do with this?
Mr. Chair?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So if, if we're going to go through the, the county, and you get, get permits through the county, shouldn't be a problem, correct?
No, the risk is, the way this is written, the risk is a hundred percent on the vendor or the contractor. We don't have anything to do, they have to get them, and obviously, they'll, they'll wind up getting them in our name because it's our property, but the risk of getting those permits is theirs.
All right. Okay, and just for clarification, I think what I'm hearing you say is that if they design something, since they're designing it, and if they're, and if that design cannot be permitted, then that's on them. It's not the fact that we're not choosing to issue the permit.
That's correct. We don't, yeah, our permit is relatively easy, but they do have to get the, the prerequisite environmental permits and any core, I don't think they need any core, but FDEP permits and things like that.
But that would be deal, dealt with down the road on this.
It will be dealt with when somebody selects it. That will be one of their first tasks, to try to at least tacitly figure out what they believe is permissible after they have discussions with the agencies.
Great. Commissioner Kennard, thank you for your patience. You-
Make a motion to approve item E4.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on this motion? Okay, commissioners, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And that passes four to one. Is that the way you record it, Madam Clerk? Okay. All right, so let's see, we got item E5, please, Mr. Oliver.
Yes, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the HUD 571 Form Certificate of Payments to Influence Federal Transaction as Required by HUD.
Chairman, approve of E5.
Second.
Okay, motion is by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Board, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. E6, please.
Approve and authorize the increase of the Veteran Affairs Supportive Housing Voucher Program Payment Standard by twenty percent.
Mr. Oliver, can you just give a little background? This, this is a request to HUD to do that, right? I mean, is that what this is? So it's not that we're paying more, we're, we're-
Well, the federal government, we're asking the ceiling be increased for these payments because of rents, we're not being able to assist people because of the rents in the area.
Okay, I just wanted people to understand that.
Chair, I move to approve E6.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Schlebo, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on this? Commissioners, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Item E7, please.
Yes, adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution pertaining to the extended application and contract terms from the Mid-Florida Area Agency on Aging Doing Businesses Elder Options for the Older Americans Act Title 3B, C1, C2, 3E, and USA, USDA Programs.
Chairman, approve of E7.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Davis with a motion, and second, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Board, any further thing else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. E8, please.
Yes, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the agreement with EIP Credit Company LLC for Wetland Mitigation Credits in the amount of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Chairman, approve of E8.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Davis makes the motion, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public comment? Board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. E9, please.
Yes, E9, approve and authorize the chairman to execute digitally signed per the FAA, the attached FAA grant agreements for the Crystal River and Enverness Airports.
Chairman, approve of E9.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Schlebo. Is there any other public comment on this motion? Any further board discussion?
Yes, Chair, airports has only one P.
Oh, on that page, yes. Okay, any other discussion?
Noted.
All right, I look at the numbers, I don't look at the spelling. Okay, so we have no further board discussion on item E9, so that would be all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. Item E10, please.
Yes, this is land acquisition of 325 East Harvard Street, Enverness, Florida, and this is for stormwater management, and we are purchasing the, in fact, to provide additional DRA capacity, we'd ask for approval of A, B, and C.
Chairman, approve of E10, A, B, and C.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on item E10? Board, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Item E11, please.
Yes, E11, this is a Scott project, which will involve the repaving of Yuli from Bradshaw to US-19. It is roughly a seventy-five, twenty-five split, that varies depending on what the contract comes back in, we can be a little more than the twenty-five because they priced it under old pricing, but we would ask approval of A and B.
Motion approve, item E11, A and B.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Kennard makes the motion, second by Commissioner Schlebo. Any public comment? Commissioners, any other discussion?
No, sir.
Love those Scott programs. We see them going to continue for a while, I hope, so, until the money dries up, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. E12, please.
Yes, this is a Scott project again for Turner Camp from East Bank Court, East Matthew Meadows Court, and we'd ask for approval of A and B.
Motion approve, item E12, A and B.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Schlebo. Is there any other public comment? Any further board discussion? Does anyone know, Mr. Oliver, is this the section of road where the gentleman comes every year for ten years, he says he's been coming and asking about it?
I will defer to Mr. Oliver on that, I do not know.
Do we know, he doesn't know, okay, hopefully it is.
I can tell you this, he'll be happy some of us getting done.
Okay, all right, good, okay, very good. So no further board discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Item E13, please.
Yes, E13 is another Scott project, we're cleaning up on Scott money today. This is Whitley Coochie Trail from Scott Lane Western Intersection to SR-200, and we would ask for approval of A and B.
Chair, I move to approve E13, A and B.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Schlebo, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there public comment on this motion? Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. E14, please.
Yes, approve and authorize the chairman to execute an agreement with the Florida Department of Corrections, this is for five-year term, beginning January seventeenth, 2022 through January sixteenth, 2027. This basically replaces an existing agreement that's expiring.
Motion to approve, E14.
Second.[1771.44]
Commissioner Davis makes the motion, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there public comment on item E fourteen? Is there any further board discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That passes unanimously. Item E fifteen.
Yes, we've gotten a request and the sheriff's office has signed off on it as appropriate expenditure to expend five thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents uh, to the Anti-Drug Coalition of Citrus County, and this is an eligible expense for that, those funds.
Motion to approve item E fifteen.
Well, I heard, well, I heard Commissioner Kennard start, and I heard Commissioner Carnahan come right in on the tail. So you're getting the second, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Carnahan. Is there any public comment? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. While you're coming up, I have a procedural question, Mr. Oliver. When do we get updates as of what's being added to this account?
We can give that, we can give you that. We, our original plan was to go quarterly.
Okay.
Uh, and uh, uh, with the request for funds, but it just got.
Yeah, well, that's okay. I was just curious. Is that, it's not just once a year we look to see what's in there. We, we get something more, we should get something more.
We can, we can provide you one on making.
I'm sorry. Excuse us. Please, please continue.
Uh, I just, Renee Teaster, Anti-Drug Coalition, just want to say thank you again for uh, your consideration of funding always. Um, I did prepare packets for each of you. If you have any questions, please don't, feel free to reach out to me. Uh, Red Ribbon Week has, we've continued to ramp up our efforts each year. Uh, we partnered with Florida National Guard again this year. We were very happy to be back in schools, uh, impacting, directly impacting middle schools in particular because this is when a lot of the problems start uh, with drugs, uh, with youth. Um, but we had over three hundred teachers that participated in our door decorating contest this year. Uh, we had a lot of students who participated in our middle school essay competition. And again, uh, our partnerships with our community stakeholders is really key in reaching students. So, thank you for your fun, uh, your, our consideration of the funding. And I wanted to also say that for several years now, we have um, been told that we could not use our state funding, which was through the block grant. Uh, we did uh, use two thousand dollars this year to offset those costs um, because we, we, for some reason, they magically changed this year, and we were told that we could utilize that funding towards Red Ribbon Week. So, we are trying to be fiscally responsible and make our funding go as far as it can. Um, but we wanted to utilize Citrus County funds because these are Citrus County students. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to item um, E fifteen? Okay, I, I would just say um, that's what this fund was set up for, so if you have a need for it, bring it to the commission, well, get the sheriff's approval, bring it to the board, and let the board decide. Because, you know, if you have programs that, uh, that you think can be, can benefit from this, that's, that's what it's set up for, so. Commissioners, any further discussion from the board? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. And that passes unanimously. Let's move on to item E sixteen. This might have a little discussion involved with it.
Okay, on E sixteen, our uh, this fire, it's a fire station located at ninety-six fifty-eight South Pleasant Grove Road. We do not have any use for the fire station. Uh, we think that the fire station should be surplused and sold, and our recommendation would be to uh, let them lease it on a month-to-month basis with sixty-day notice for termination until we sell it. But uh, they have asked that it be, uh, the lease be renewed uh, and it's for the period beginning December first, twenty twenty-one through November thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Carnahan.
We definitely had a robust conversation about this, and uh, if I remember right, uh, these should be put back on the market to sell. So what I would do is uh, maybe offer the food bank to buy the uh, piece of property if they seem deemed, you know, I support the food bank one hundred percent, but again, this board uh, took the direction of uh, of wanting to get these uh, back into the hands of the residents, back, back on the um, tax roll. And, and so therefore, I'm gonna vote uh, not to do this based on our conversation uh, before.
Okay, Commissioner Schleybach?
I, I'm a little confused by uh, who is actually going to rent this space? Is it a storage facility for the food bank?
It's the Community Food Bank of Citrus County. They're the people that are currently renting it. I don't know enough about, you know, the functions they're performing at it. I don't know.
Cause I thought the, the bank, the food bank rented from another food, like there were two.
I can't answer that.
As I recall correctly, the two food banks were co-located, but Community Food Bank has additional recognition, and perhaps Chief Stevens was about to save me on this. But not, it's not a pantry. It's a bank that serves all the other pantries, so.
Correct. Okay, so first of all, Commissioner Schleybach still has the floor.
Thank you.
And second of all, you work for him, chief. You don't work for us, so I don't entertain any staff up here unless Mr. Oliver says it's okay. Have a seat. You're not going anywhere. Okay, but just, just so we're clear on that, okay? Cause it's not for us to bring you up, okay? So.
Thank you. Um, so that was the first part. Um, is this we care food pantry or food, which, who is this?
Mr. Stevens may have a better uh, handle on it. I get them confused, to be honest, because they're right beside each other on uh, uh, on Cardinal down there, or historically have been.
So it's okay with you if the chief addresses us? Okay, chief, thank you for coming up here.
Yes, so this is a Citrus County food bank.
Okay.
And they use this for extra storage because they don't have enough.
Okay, so then, thank you. So my question to Randy is, our county administrator is, I tried to find out uh, if other food banks in Hernando County, Marion County, if they're doing the same dollar lease, because I know that we um, made sure to get quite a bit of money from the CARES Act to the nonprofits, and um, I just, the, the, if they're, if they have enough money in the bank and they, and we, and it seems to be that they do, and we're losing money on this building, then we should just sell the building to them and let them handle it if they would like to buy it. That would be um, but I couldn't find out if other counties are doing the dollar also. I would be curious to know that. Thank you, and thank you, sir.
Comments?
Yes, I can't answer whether this building functionally meets their needs on a long-term basis or if this is just a short-term fix. Uh, as it relates to what other counties do, I, I don't think in this case that's necessarily a good barometer, because communities are different and uh, but, you know, the decision is up to you all.
Anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Don't go too far, chief. There're gonna be some more requests. Commissioner Davis?
Um, if memory serves, I brought this up in the summer um, as a short-term thing to get them through hurricane season. And it was never my intent to push forward with them continuing to lease at a dollar. Um, I, on the other hand, I don't want to pull, much like you did on the board many years ago, gave all the nonprofits that were receiving support from the county, you gave, what was it, a ten-year, I think, plan to step down the funding and whatnot. I don't want to pull the rug out from underneath them, but I would agree, number one, if this meets their needs long-term, we should entertain offers to buy from them. And secondly, if it doesn't meet their needs long-term and they're not interested in buying it, then I would look at a short-term solution, working with them to continue leasing it while being, them being told when it sells, you're out. So those are the two routes that I would be um, interested in pursuing. And thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yes, I'm, I'm actually gonna make a motion that we approve item E sixteen, B and C uh, with a sixty-day out. Uh, the board has given direction that we want to divest ourselves of all of these fire stations that we're not going to use in the future. Uh, and so, you know, they would obviously get an, get an option to, to purchase it, or others would have the uh, ability to approach the county about purchasing it as well. But until that time, we, you know, we continue on with this lease uh, through November thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two.
Subject to a sixty-day cancellation, right?
Yes.
Second.
Uh, that will, upon approval by the county attorney, because it's gonna take some slight modification.
Okay, so just so I'm clear now, we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard and second by Commissioner Davis. Says to approve item B and C. Now, that just says renew the lease with a sixty-day out. Do you, does that also include, or are you interested in discussing the putting it up for sale while we're doing that? And then if, I think, cause that's what Mr. Oliver was proposing, is that if you did this, then you put it up for sale, and if somebody approaches us and wants to buy it, then they, that's when we would exercise the sixty-day out.
Correct.
Are you interested? Is that part of your motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we understand that, Madam Clerk, and everybody's good with that? Yes, yes, ma'am.
I actually thought I heard Randy say month-to-month, though, and.
Well, that was what his original proposal was.
So if we put it up for sale, we, they have sixty-day notice to vacate the property?
Uh, if we sell the property, yes. We would give them, exercise our sixty-day notice. We'd make the purchaser uh, give them possession or close within the sixty days. Uh, this will require some modification of the lease, so it would uh, require, I would recommend that it be appointed approval by the county attorney, recognizing those terms.
So I just want to make sure we're kind of all on the same page. Mr. Oliver recommended that, but I think what the motion says that's been made uh, is that we renew the lease at a dollar. We put the, we put the property on the market, and if it sells, then we give the people, the food pantry or whatever, sixty-days' notice uh, to get out.
Correct.
Okay, everybody's good with that?
And I would.
I'm sorry.
I would renew my second, or confirm my second with the addition of putting it on the market.
Okay, yes, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. I understood when we had that long conversation about this that we were going to look into what it truly cost us and that we're not losing money. And I never really, you said insurance was too convoluted. We, I don't ever feel like I got uh, the answer to the question because now we're gonna, there's a motion on the floor to, once again, go back to what we were gonna do and rent things for a dollar. And um, I just don't think that we're in a position to keep going backwards and losing money on things.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Uh, my understanding was Mr. Oliver said it's hard to take because actually, my feeling is, I won't put words in his mouth, our insurance is not gonna change whether we have this building or not. You know, it's pretty much gonna stay the same. So, because of our, of, of the enormity of our insurance pro, uh, policy, this one individual building will have a negligible effect, and that's why it's hard to say the insurance cost of this building is X if there is no cost associated with it, if it goes away, um, per, per what the agreement is. But you're right. I think the difference is, is instead of saying, yeah, here's another one, we're just gonna renew it for a year, we're, we're adding to it that we're selling it, and that if somebody steps up to buy it, including these folks, you know, then they have sixty days to, to get out. That's my understanding of the motion, so. Yes, sir.
Well, who's that responsible for the maintenance of the building then? Let's just say something, uh, they back into it or it's damaged. Who's gonna be responsible?
Well, i- if, if, if they damage the building, they're responsible for that. If it's normal wear, what I call normal wear and tear, uh, then, then we are. But our insurance has a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, so if you have a year that you gotta claim for twenty-five thousand, it costs you twenty-five thousand. Uh, Commissioner Kitchen's right that the cost because of the insured value is, is somewhat negligible, but if you have a claim, it's gonna be significant.
Right.
But this way, I think it gives you the flexibility to uh, if somebody's ready to step up and purchase it, I think we can give it to them, uh, or we can sell it to them, and we'll get it appraised and go, if that's what you want to do.
That's, that's what I'm kinda hearing everybody's kinda agreeing to, so we're all, all in agreement on that.
Chair.
Yes.
I did hear a second amendment for the motion, but I did not hear the official first give the amendment.
The, the amendment was by?
Yes, that was to add to the motion uh, putting it up for sale.
Okay, and chief, don't go too far, cause we might be done with you on this, but I think the rest of the agenda is about with you, so you might want to have a seat nearby, whatever, so, okay? Alright, so um, now, we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Davis. We've cleared the air what the motion is. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to item E sixteen? Yes, please come up. You all know the procedure, so please come up and give us your name and fill out the green card. And our timekeeper is ready.
My name's Foster Lamb. I sit on the board of the Citrus County uh, Food Bank.
Are you here on their behalf, speaking?
I am, I am.
And do we have a letter?
Representing myself.
Okay, okay.
Uh, to thank the board for considering the lease under whatever conditions you determine appropriate. Uh, the space has allowed us to more effectively use the facility at Cardinal as we distribute about four million pounds of food a year to the about fifty clients that we have within Citrus County. Again, thank you for considering it. Uh, the space has been valuable to us.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have the next speaker on item E sixteen.
Uh, good afternoon, commissioners. I just want to clarify a little bit on that.
One more time for the record, can you wish your name?
Sabrina Watson, and um, I just want to thank you for that conversation. I think you guys are moving in the right direction. Um, and I know there's gonna be some discussion about another piece of property and that money here shortly. I want to clarify a little bit that they are also listed on the SunBiz site as a community food pantry. I'm not really sure what the difference is between a pantry and a bank. Um, I believe it to be, and I could be wrong, that a bank, food bank distributes foods to all the pantry. This is not the case in this organization, however. Uh, they share a, a facility with um, um, another organization that calls themselves a pantry, but I believe they distribute as well. Um, and, and then of course, there is still a question of maintenance, but thank you for moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Okay, we have the next speaker. Uh, while the speaker's coming up, I assume, board, I shouldn't assume, this is gonna be, go back to review by the county attorney, as Mr. Oliver talked about, and it'll come back to us then for final approval. Is that correct?
Hmm.
Or not, you're just gonna correct it?
I wouldn't plan on it coming back, because as I say, the lease expires uh, the first, so we need to, you know, get a proper lease in place.
So the county attorney understands what it is we're trying to do. You're good with that?
Yes, and then I'll just have the, have the chairman sign.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes, sir, sorry.
Good afternoon. Leadership, Plural City, again. I just want to say, yes, you're going in the right direction. I think with all of these leases, we need to get out of them and take that money that we can gain from the sale and start looking at our priorities for next year. Let's start looking where we can go with that money. Let's uh, make those priorities like road resurfacing. And I just wanted to ask real quick, could you give an update of where we are in road resurfacing today and what's happening with that? I appreciate your time again.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to item E sixteen? Okay, we're gonna close public comment. Just a couple of quick comments. I actually have road resurfacing to speak at under my area when we get to that, and um, my only comment on that, yes, uh, I think our intention was, was to get out of the rental business, but as Commissioner Davis says, we're trying to give everybody every opportunity, as with the friends at the library, to make other accommodations. Uh, but you have to ask yourself, what would all these wonderful organizations do if Citrus County didn't have any surplus property? You know, they're still gonna exist. They're still gonna have to find uh, ways, ways of doing that. So um, that is the uh, the thing before us now. Are we happy with this direction? I, I think it suits what we had talked about doing. Madam Attorney, do you have a comment?
I do. I didn't think you noticed my little hand.
I didn't see your hand. I saw your non-poker face. I've learned, I've learned, I've learned to read your face over the years, Madam Attorney.
I want to go back to the mask.
Yeah, well.
Uh, I did want to say, uh, I know you all had mentioned maybe offering it to the food bank. Um, we just have to be cognizant. I don't know what the zoning is there. Uh, I don't know if that's an appropriate use of that building, so just, just keep that in the back of your minds. I don't know.
So that, anybody would have to apply the same rules and regulations, okay? Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Chair, I have a question for either you or the administrator or the county attorney. So if, if this goes forward in the surplus property and we rent things for a dollar, um, is there a way to put into the contract that if there is some kind of damage, that they have to pay the deductible? Because otherwise, I mean, twenty-five thousand a hit could really, you know, put us backwards.
Mr. Oliver?
Well, y- you can put anything in the contract. The question becomes is whether the other party agreed to it. But for example, uh, let, let's say that the fire station got hit by lightning, which would be an act of God. I mean, the question would be, uh, you know, we as a landlord would normally be responsible for that under most leases because that's an act of God. Uh, if I were the food bank, I wouldn't agree to that, but that's up, up to them if you all want it on there.
Oh, can I say one more?
Yeah, continue.
So um, for instance, there are places where, and I know this from my own experience, that you can have um, an umbrella insurance to carry as a renter so that, that, that would be the insurance that they would hit first in, in cases of act of God. And then it, the insurance, it would go to the umbrella policy that the renter has or um, and then go on to, you know, get, get another, essentially as a second insurance. Could we not have the renters do that?
You can have that, I can't say I've ever seen insurance that would protect, uh, against the act of God if it was our property like that.
It's renters' insurance.
No, but ren, yes, renters' insurance typically covers the occu, uh, the, the thing of the renters, and also if the renter, uh, does something to cause some form of a loss.
And do we do that even?
Uh, they have insurance on, yeah, they have insurance on their operation.
Okay.
Anything else? Commissioners, anything else? Everybody still remember the motion we're gonna vote on? I, as I understand it, it's to, uh, renew the lease per B and C with the addition of a sixty day out and put the property on the market, right?
Yep.
That's, that's everybody's understanding? We've had public input, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Okay, very good. Item E seventeen.
Okay, approve and authorize the chairman to execute interfacility transport agreement between Citrus County, Florida, and Citrus HMA LLC doing businesses, Brava Health, Seven Rivers Hospital, to provide ambulance services from Brava Health ER, uh, Citrus Hills Free Standing Emergency Department to Brava Health, Seven Rivers, or other Brava Network hospitals as agreed by the parties.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner Carnahan.
I, I, I had a phone call last week that Seven Rivers, um, has been shutting their ER down, and is that, is there any truth to that? And then we're, we're having to transport to Citrus Memorial? If they're getting full or something, are they shutting it down?
They periodically have been going on divert.
Okay.
Not, not that they're shutting down, they're just on divert because otherwise it'll be tied up on the walls.
That's right, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Anything else?
And are they doing that because we're charging them now, if, if we sit there?
I don't think so, we, we normally get advised when they're on divert. We're more proactive on that divert.
Just wanna make sure, I just, you just had that con, asked that question, thank you.
Chief, while you're there, uh, let me just ask you, I assume this memo has your name at the top, so you're okay with this?
Yes.
You're in support of this?
Yes.
And feel you can handle this?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, we'd be looking for a motion.
Chair.
Yes?
Move approval of, uh-
E seventeen?
E seventeen.
Okay. Commissioner Carnahan makes the motion, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public comment on this motion? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Sabrina Watson, I just have a question. Is the services that are being offered here in E seventeen, is that something that can also be offered by the, uh, public sector versus a governmental sector? Are we taking money out of the pockets of people that could per, be performing these, uh, businesses in our county? I, it's just, I just would like to know, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on item E seventeen? Uh, okay, so we'll close the public comment. Uh, Mr. Oliver, I assume the answer to that's yes. I mean, right, there are businesses that do this.
There are, the ki, the key is, is to have, uh, enough people, and we've got obviously eleven ambulances on the street, but that can move them back and forth in a timely and efficient manner without calling somebody out of county. Uh, the, the problem is, is frequently there's not enough business to keep them going all the time to warrant having people, uh, staffed all the time.
Okay, yes, yes.
So the question would be, is there anybody else in the county that's a county business doing this service?
Not that I know of, it's a county business.
Oh.
You know of anybody, Chief, that's a county, that's located in this county with a corporate presence in the county?
So currently, Med Fleet does help us with interfacility transports. Actually, they are doing all the interfacility transports that are non-abandoned C at this time. Uh, Med Fleet and ourselves have been working together. They are going to be submitting for a COPCN, um, here in the very near future. Uh, we work very well with them, they, uh, we, we don't take business away from them, there's a lot of business here that, that they can't keep up, nor, I don't know if we'll be able to, to be honest.
So you see this as kind of a partnership kind of thing?
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioner Carnahan, you still have a floor?
Yeah, no, I, so I wanna know.
Okay, Commissioner Slayback?
Yeah, thank you, Chief, because you know, this is a huge concern for me, and Med Fleet has made an investment into this county, Randy, and he, they have, are, working on or have already signed a lease within our county. And we, I've been assured nine-one-one is our first, uh, you know, operation of business, and interfacility is secondary, because I do think that that is something for the private sector, and I, I'm gonna keep saying that over and over, because if we have eleven ambulances right now, is that what, we have eleven?
So we, we have ten, twenty-four seven.
Okay, 'cause Randy said eleven.
And then periodically, we go to eleven, we may go to twelve, it just depends on where we're at with our peak.
And we really need how many ambulances?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. So what, that's exactly my point, we're at eleven, we need fifteen, so nine-one-one is gonna be first, Med Fi, Fleet is going to be handling this until you get to a point, but they have made an investment, and you're working great with them, and I really appreciate that, because we need, we don't wanna make government bigger, we want to make, you know, the private sector, you know, profit, and make an investment into our county and help us with our tax base, so I'm gonna keep pushing that. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other commission discussion? Folks down here, didn't forget about you down here, guys?
No, I'm good.
All right, okay, so I believe we've had public comment, we've had discussion on item E seventeen, the motion was by Commissioner Carnahan, second by Commissioner Kennard to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, item E eighteen, Fire Rescue Day Today.
Yeah. Uh, we're asking you to approve, uh, and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Citrus County, Florida, and local forty-five, uh, sixty-two professional firefighters of Citrus County, uh, uh, International Association of Firefighters, with an effective date October one, twenty-twenty-one, as you all were previously advised. Uh, there are actually two, uh, units in this bargaining unit, one is for what we call the rank and file, and the other's the supervisory unit. The rank and file ratified, uh, the supervisory did not, so we're asking you only to approve the agreement with the rank and file.
Commissioners, that's your, the request of you. Anyone care to make a motion?
Um, I'm a little confused, he was discussing E nineteen, we're on E eighteen.
E eighteen.
Yes.
Oh, I'm so, I thought we already did that. Okay, uh, yes, E eighteen is this, uh, we currently have a temporary COPCN, uh, and this gives the, uh, fire rescue operation a, uh, a five-year CO, CPN that will expire September thirty, twenty-twenty-six, and we have proceeded through the necessary paperwork to get to this point, and we would seek your approval.
Chair, I move to accept E eighteen.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Slayback makes the motion, second by Commissioner Davis to approve, and, um, is there any public comment at this time? It's quite interesting, we have to give ourselves permission to run our own EMS service, but, so.
Everybody needs a license.
That's right, that's right. Okay, so there's no public comment, Commissioners, any other discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Now, Randy already told us about E nineteen, but we can, you know, uh, you're looking for authorization for the first one.
Yes, to approve the agreement with the rank and file, not the supervisory unit.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve E nineteen A.
Okay.
I don't have an A.
Yeah, but I guess that's that part of it, we're, we're gonna make it A, right? So.
So confused.
A would be?
Rank and file.
Rank and file, okay. Only.
Second.
Okay, so we got the motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Slayback. Does a clerk understand the motion? Okay, is there any public comment on this? Commissioners, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously, and item E twenty.
Yes, well, in the grant world, when there's a grant that becomes open, you apply for it, because if you don't get it, you can apply next year. So this opportunity arose, and so we're recommending that we apply for this grant. Uh, it's a grant, uh, through the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. It's due the end of this week. Uh, it would replace the Motorola units, uh, that we have, uh, for firing EMS. Uh, total grant, uh, the total amount of it would be one million thirteen thousand nine forty-two twelve. The match is a hundred and one thousand three ninety-four twenty-one. Uh, we have in machinery and equipment sixty-one five, and we would be, uh, taking the remainder of the match if we get it, and I don't know exactly what the timing is, but my guess is it'll be summer, uh, when we get notification of the grant. But as I say, if there's a grant opportunity and you, uh, can potentially get it, my recommendation is always to apply for it, because if not, you can do it again next year.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve E twenty A and B.
Second.
Okay, so motions by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on item E twenty? Commissioners, any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Chief, before you leave us, do you have anybody new you'd like to introduce to Citrus County?
Well, I'd like to introduce our division chief of EMS, Jason Morgan, if you could please stand. He's a gentleman that's responsible for a lot of the work with EMS, and, uh, he's, uh, helped us bring all our engines up to ALS. He was actually a captain in our organization, and he promoted to the division chief of EMS.
Very good, congratulations on your new position.
Thanks.
I just think it's important that our many millions of TV viewers get to see who's in charge of EMS now, so.
That is correct, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Chief, while you're here, I just wanna let you know, uh, all I hear from the community is how outstanding our fire rescue is doing, so thank you so much for the great job your team's doing. Okay, Mr. Oliver, I believe we're ready for E twenty-one?
Yes, E twenty-one, uh, uh, David Plucknick, the Economic Development Director, came up with this idea to bring site selectors in. The site selectors are the ones that for bigger companies, and for sometimes smaller companies, make recommendation as to where, uh, businesses locate, uh, when they come in, and, uh, it's, it's proposed to have an event that we're gonna bring, uh, about a half a dozen site selectors in, uh, and the purpose will be to educate them on what amenities we've got. Uh, the event's gonna be in February, uh, it should coincide roughly with when the Sun Coast opens, which we think is a positive, will create a huge buzz. And, uh, I would note, though, we need to amend the budget from seventy-five hundred to ninety-five hundred, because we were, uh, hopeful of getting some, uh, hospitality suites, uh, co, uh, comped, but, uh, that didn't happen. So we would seek your approval for, uh, a, a budget for juice for Citrus, uh, for ninety-five hundred dollars.
Can I ask a quick question? Um, up to now, this, this, uh, department's been funded by the business tax, would this ninety-five hundred dollars come from that same category?
Still is coming from the business tax.
Okay, very good, okay, so it's self-financing?
We got a grant from, uh, also, if you recall, we got a grant from Duke Power for fifteen thousand for marketing.
Great, great, excellent. Yes, Commissioner Davis?
I was just gonna make a motion if you're ready for it.
Please do, whenever you're ready.
Uh, motion to approve E twenty-one with the change to the budget being ninety-five hundred.
Looking for a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay.
But I wanna comment on it before we vote.
Yes, sir. So we have a motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on item E twenty-one? Okay, now we'll go to Board Discussion, Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, Randy, I, um, uh, for some reason, I'm thinking that the county had access to, it's a, I wanna say a meeting room out at, out at Black Diamond, or there's, there's a, a separate room up towards the front of the development, that I believe the county has access to that. I don't know what fees are associated to that, but I, I, I was thinking it was a lot less than two thousand dollars. Is that something that we've looked into, uh, to save that extra two thousand?
Well, wha, yeah, the two thousand dollars is, is, uh, for the overnight expenses, uh, Mr. McGee and Commissioner Slayback have been working with the folks at Black Diamond, and we were trying to get it comped. Uh, we got a thing yesterday that they were going to discount it, but they could not comp it, and this is for, uh-
Okay.
This is for overnight lodging.
Okay, all right, very good, I'm good.
Anything else?
I haven't answered to that.
Let's let it.
Um, I, I had negotiated it from eight hundred a night to three hundred a night, and that's six hundred dollars.
Uh, three times six, 'cause there're gonna be potentially six people.
But that, that, what we accommodate is only gonna accommodate four, and I'm figuring out, either Mr. McGee or myself are gonna open up our homes to accommodate, to get the accommodation, so I own, so it's, I thought it was six hundred just for the house, not si, three hundred a person.
No, my understanding is, is it's three hundred for the house, you're correct, per night.
Yes.
And then the, the house will house two people.
No, four people.
No, each ha, I thought each house would only-
It's a two-bed, it has, it's, it is-
Two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom with twins in each room, so that they're gonna, I figured the gentlemen are gonna have to share the-
I don't think that's a good plan.
Okay.
Uh, I'll let, uh-
'Cause there, that was the only thing that was available at the time, and then I was gonna check with other houses opening up, but it was six hundred dollars, okay, so just say that two-bedroom, that's six hundred dollars.
And I'd figured three times, and that's how I increased it eighteen hundred dollars.
Okay, okay, I was wondering.
And I'm not involved in this, but if you were inviting me to Citrus County to show me off, I wouldn't wanna bunk with, you know.
Who knows it?
Right.
I figured, I'm so used to four golfers, I don't even think about it, so.
When they're playing golf, they're willing to take whatever they get.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the motion and the second, and we're still on Board Discussion, is there any other discussion on it?
Well, just that, I, I, I know that both Mr. McGee and I are working on it, and, um, as a member, we can get accommodations comped if we have to host it, so that'll save some money.
And the attorney's okay with all that? You guys are running that by her, so that, uh, no, this is kinda as a gift or anything like that?
Well, it, Mr. McGee will be comping it.
Well, then. You know me, Mr. McGee, everything's gotta be out in the open, so I don't, I don't wanna read about it in the papers, so that's-
That's a good question, yes.
So, so, uh, is this something that we want to continue now, or, or will we rest assured that it'll all be worked out legally to make sure we're all covered on this?
I will only do things legally.
Oh, I know, I know, that's why we need to make sure everything goes through the attorney here, to make sure that, uh, we're doing it. So, so, we're agreeing to spend ninety-five hundred dollars, how that gets allocated is gonna be up to the team, that's the way I see it, right?
That's correct.
So what I see I'm voting on is, is approving ninety-five hundred dollars to entertain these folks and-
Up two, it could be less.
Right, and other folks will figure out how we're gonna do that, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're all clearing that?
Very good. Very good.
Okay, all right. So, and we did take public input on this, I believe? We did? Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Okay. Now we're up to item F. Mr. Oliver?
Yes, we'd ask that item six be deleted.
Item six be deleted. This also comes, brings to mind, I had down here to inquire about our current road resurfacing program. I know that we agreed to a completion contractor for the one for the previous year, but I believe we're in the October first, twenty-twenty-one fiscal year, so we're, I was told, that's ready to go out.
The bid, I believe, is on the street, isn't it?
Okay.
I don't know what the date that it's due in. Can you tell us what date, Mr. Olmey, this is, the bids are due in?
Because there was a question earlier about where we were in road resurfacing, and that's what I was wondering as well.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. We received the bids either last week or the week before, so we're getting that on the agenda as soon as we can.
Okay, and this will be for the next, for the, the current year we're in budget allocation?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And the next year's list is already developed, so we plan to bring it back to you in March, April, May, so we can get a bid and award at the first meeting in October.
Outstanding, outstanding. Thank you very much.
And that's also going to have to be a budget concern if we're going to up the money as this board...
We're, we're going to bid it with flexibility, at different levels.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Olmey. Okay, so Mr. Oliver is requesting approval with the removal of item six. What's the board's pleasure?
Chair, move approval of item F with a deletion of six.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Slaybaugh. Is there any public comment on this motion? Any further board discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Mr. Oliver, we're up to G one.
Yes, we're asking that you review and approve the legal descriptions of the new commissioned districts and adopt the resolutions. These are co-terminous with the school board district, district boundaries for their elected officials also. This still has to go through a couple of legal processes, but we're well underway, and we'll make it well in advance of when it's needed by the supervisor election.
Move approval of G one.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Carahan makes the motion, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on item G one? Board, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Let me hit item G two. I asked Mr. Oliver to put this on. The board adopted our meeting schedule for next year, and I have several potential conflicts. I just want the board to have a clear understanding of this. This says that I'm asking for a request due to canvassing board. The canvassing board is one of the dates. The other date is a personal conflict I have, and I was just seeing that since we're making this change almost a year in advance, if there would be a problem, so I ran it by Mr. Oliver. The one that's being moved from Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, to Monday, the October thirty-first, that's because the canvassing board meeting is on that Tuesday. So that's, that's an all-day event. And then the other one, the previous one from eleventh, that one is a conflict for me, but then I thought if we're changing the twenty-fifth, that still gives us the two weeks between meetings. I ran it by Mr. Oliver to see that we wouldn't have a backup of meetings or anything would be neglected, and he was okay with it. So this, this really is just, you know, I can just not show up those two meetings, or we can change the meeting dates. So I would be asking for approval that we modify and change our meeting dates for the month of October per this memo.
Chair, I move to approve and modify the October dates stated here, and that the October thirty-first commissioners wear costumes.
Do not give a second.
I'll revise that. Take out the costumes.
Don't, don't include the costumes. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Slaybaugh.
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on this motion?
Those two are wearing costumes.
No, she took it off.
I amended it.
Okay, commissioners, any other discussion?
No, sir.
I just want to reiterate that I thought I was going to be the funny commissioner, but I'm not.
Funny, I thought you said you were going to be the one with money.
No, that's definitely not me.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And I'll bring this up later, because I'm on the canvassing board, but later on, we're going to have to volunteer or pick an alternate as well, so this date will also affect that commissioner, so we'll get to that later in the agenda, but just, just be aware of that. Okay, we are, we have finished item H one. That takes us on to item I one. Mr. Oliver, you want to read these?
Yes, this is to announce the expiration terms for three of the Aviation Advisory Board members in District One, District Four, District Five. Those terms expire January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. B, accept with regret the resignation of Mr. Frederick Castoff von Battenberg, member at large, and announce the vacancy of the position. C, announce the taking of application for a District One position, District Four, District Five, as well as a member at large. The new member terms will begin February first, twenty-twenty-two. We're at the next scheduled Aviation Advisory Board meeting and expire January thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. The member at large position will expire January thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three. The advertisement will run until January fourteenth.
Thank you. And that's informational, but I do believe the board should make a motion to accept with regret the resignation.
Chair, I move to approve item I, one, A, B, and C, and accept with regret the resignation of Mr. Frederick Castel von Battenberg.
Right.
Second.
Second, okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Slaybaugh, second by Commissioner Kennard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you, board. That takes us to I two. Mr. Oliver?
Yes, announce a vacancy on the Historic Resources Advisory Board for an at-large position that expires January thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. I three, this are vacancies on the Tourist Development Council Advisory Board positions, announce terms of membership available and the taking of application for two positions that are designated, and these are, have to be, meet certain qualifications. Designated as an owner-operator of tourist accommodation and one position that is designated as a citizen who demonstrates an interest in tourist development on the Tourist Development Council Board. The new terms will be for four years, beginning Jan, December first, twenty-twenty-two, and ending January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Applications will be accepted December fifteenth through December the thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you. And I four, please.
I four, announce vacancies for the technical member positions on the Water and Wastewater Authority, the terms of which are four years for technical members will both expire on January thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, sir.
Chair, would you like a motion for all three at once?
No, we don't need to motion. The only reason I asked for a motion was for the resignation.
Got it.
Right, so these are just informational. But thanks for checking with me. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Chair, I have some questions on I four.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Okay, so this, this, I have a lot of notes here. We don't have a director in this position, correct?
We're using an outside person.
And who, we have an outside person that's overseeing the board?
No, I'm doing that. We have an outside person that runs the numbers. It's FGUA and Raff Tellis.
And how long has the director position been vacant?
I'd have to look, but my guess would be probably two years.
Okay, and I just feel like this is, you know, an important function, and that it needs to be given the attention, and I don't know how much it takes away from you to run this board, and I, and I know that, who, who is assisting? Is Robin handling the paperwork?
Robin handles the secretarial duties, yes, of the board. And Beth provides the legal.
Okay, so you guys are absorbing something that I think is considerable, and I don't know where we are, like, are we trying to hire somebody, or we're trying to save money? Where, where are we at with this? And, and I think it meets quarterly, correct?
Yes, roughly meets quarterly.
And then my final thing is, is it a conflict of interest for you to be running this board?
If we hired somebody for that particular position, they'd report to me, so I don't see the difference.
Then that answers that question. Okay. Well, that's, these are just some of my concerns, that, that I, I don't know where we're at, why we don't have somebody in this position, are we not able to find somebody in this position?
Well, the board decided that they wanted to try it as a contract position. There was discussion about that, that was prior to your becoming a member of the board.
Oh, so that's why I don't know. Okay.
Yeah, we, I remember why we don't have somebody on staff. I remember that discussion, and I remember the discussion that led us to this due to, this is not what you would call a full-time job, okay? But at one point in time, we had somebody that this was a full-time job, and we moved away from that, and I don't, and I think because it's not a full-time job, that was why it's hard to find somebody to come in and do it, and that's why we agreed at that time to let, let Mr. Oliver, you know, go out and find somebody to do it under a contract basis. So that's kind of how we got to where we are.
And there was one other consideration. One of the utilities that's regulated is one of the ten larger, ten largest providers in the state, and a person that you would hire locally to handle that frankly was not qualified to do that analysis.
Well, I, I just want to put it out there to the commissioners that this is an important function, and if we're giving, you know, having staff do additional work on top of their regular job, then are we compensating our staff for doing this? And I, I just don't want it to be, you know, a, a function that they're volun, essentially being made to volunteer for. And if we're saving money, then perhaps, you know, whoever's really working on this board gets compensated.
I would just say, for my part, the only person I've ever heard object to this is one of the local utility people, who thinks that, that perhaps we're not as, I don't know, quick to respond to, to their requests or whatever, but that's the only pushback I've ever heard about our, our current position, so. And, and as far as that goes, to, to do this once a quarter, I don't think is any different than us attending other meetings of other liaison boards that we're at or whatever. Really, Randy's job is to do whatever we ask him to do, and that's, that's what he does, so, or finds the people to do it. But, you know, yes?
Can we ask the attorney? What, am I, what do you think about, I mean, can we just have, I mean, not just Randy, evidently there's Robin, and I don't know who else in staff is covering this board?
All of those two.
Okay, well...
Do you want to respond to her? I mean, your question is, is it legal? Is that what the question is?
I kind of feel like it's... Is it, is it legal not to have a separate director? Yes. You know, whether the, the board is being administered correctly, that's, you know, that's up to the administrator, and if you, if you guys feel that it's being administered correctly or not.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd be curious to know. Okay.
Well, that's why I came back to what the complaints would be. You know, if you were hearing complaints from all kinds of people, then there might be questions. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, you don't?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I, I understand what Commissioner Slaybaugh is, is getting to here, and you're right, the only, the, the only person that I've ever heard have an issue with this is, runs the, you know, the big utility involved here. But also, that big utility funds the overwhelming lion's share of the operational costs of, of all of this. So I, I think that they do have a voice that, that needs to be heard, and we did, we did direct Randy to use a contract service. I guess I didn't know at the time, or didn't fully appreciate at the time, that the contract service would be providing advice and review, that type of thing, but the actual running of that director's position was still going to be the county administrator. And if that, if that utility, or, or, I have heard, I, I take that back, because I have heard from one of the other utilities that's involved with this board, and they're concerned as well about the county administrator holding down that director's position. So it seems that it's something that we should probably be taking a look at, is, you know, maybe we can't find that director next week, or next month, or six months from now, but should we still be looking to see if there is a person out there that would fill that role for these quarterly meetings, that director's position?
Yes, sir.
I think there's one other option that hadn't been thrown on the table. I don't know how popular this would be, but in my opinion, one person and nobody here locally, or that you could afford to hire, would be qualified to review the rate and do the rate forecasts that are required for the larger utility. The other option that's not been considered is to turn the whole thing back over to the PSC, because that's really their job, and they would be best suited particularly to handle the larger utility. But unfortunately, you can't be selective and turn one of the utilities over to the PSC without turning them all. As long as they're asking for an inflationary increase, the PSC is pretty easy to get along with. If you're doing a rate case, it requires much more involvement. I will say that in fairness to the smaller utilities.
Yes, sir.
Randy, I think, we, we had this conversation, and I thought that we, we did interview some internals. They, they didn't take the job?
We had one person internally that I thought would, would be interested, or would be very capable of doing it.
And they didn't want it?
They would be very beneficial for a period of time, but they would be quite bored.
Gotcha. And again, I, I, but this conversation has been within the last year, I know that. Because I've, I've, we've all had those whispers of concern from those individuals, but now the one individual who I talked to recently is pretty happy with the way things are going now, so I, I've just given you my two cents. But I, but I know we definitely looked at it.
I, I guess the question before us then is, is this something that the board wants to discuss in the future, or not? And if so, we need to get it on the agenda to come back and have a full discussion of it, if you want to give Mr. Oliver different direction than what we've given him in the past. Yes, sir?
I would recommend that discussion happen after the, the rate case with the largest utility is resolved. That has gotten more complicated because of the intervention, intervention of the, of the Office of Public Counsel, which is the watchdog agency at the state level as it relates to that, and they are very much according to how things should work at the PSC, and they're requiring a stipulation agreement, which we're currently almost complete drafting.
Okay. See, in my mind, it seems like Mr. Oliver has a pretty good handle on what's going on, but if the board thinks that you want to make some changes, I think what he's saying is wait until after the rate case is done and then put it on the agenda. Yes, ma'am.
Well, it's interesting, and this is great to have these conversations, because I truly was going at this like, this is an important board that has meetings, and there is, there is secretarial work to, to this, and if, if, if the administrator thinks he can handle it, that's great, but if you're giving staff direction to get everything together for these meetings on top of their regular job, that's where I was coming from, like, well, we're saving money on the director, but then we're just telling staff, okay, you're going to do this job for free, essentially. You know, you're going to, something in the, in, in those Beth and Robin's case, something else is going to be put aside to handle the quarterly meetings. So I was going at it more like, are we compensating our staff for handling something that was normally a paid position? And so I didn't even go think about the utility companies not getting their answers that they need if they are getting them properly, because that part is a priority. So it's interesting. I would, I would like to see how much is involved into running the, the board meetings and getting everything together.
Okay, Commissioner Carahan?
All right, Mr. Oliver, when Chuck was here, somebody was still doing secretary work also, correct?
Correct. It was supported out of my office, so that really, that really hasn't changed with one exception.
It was not a dedicated secretary, correct?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else?
The customer complaint.
I, I didn't think we had, all I will say is I didn't think we had a secretary. I know Chuck was full-time, but I, I didn't think he had a secretary.
He did not.
Perhaps, this is a suggestion, you can do whatever you want. You can bring back on the agenda. Perhaps you might want to sit down with Mr. Oliver and go over this in detail to get some of that background that Commissioner Carahan just brought up, and then if you wish, after the rate case, I, I don't have a problem looking at anything like this, as long as we don't do something, disrupt something that's in progress that could come back at us.
Sure.
So that, but that's, that's your call, whatever you want to do. So, so we okay to move on, or you had some action you wanted?
I would like to, I would like to sit down with Randy Oliver and go over this and make sure we don't, aren't burning our staff out.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I, I just want to be clear, I don't want anybody to think anything, anybody's not saying things properly. When I first started at the county, there were two full-time positions. There was a full-time secretary, because she sat across from our office. Her name is escaping me. But that person and Chuck, so I don't want anybody to, I, maybe Randy doesn't remember that, because we, it was when we first started.
I wouldn't remember.
No, it was when, when we first, well, maybe it was when Jeff Rogers was the administrator. I'm sorry. But I didn't want anybody to think we weren't being completely upfront.
Well, then my question, when did she leave? Do you have any rumors on that?
Well, and again, if the board doesn't want, but see...
You don't remember Amy? Wasn't it Amy?
Hold on, everybody. We're just speculating here. So let's wait, if you want to have this discussion, let's wait until we get the facts in front of us, and then we can say, this is when this happened, this is how we got to where And then we can say, this is when this happened. This is how we got to where we got. And then the board can make any changes. Because we're just sitting here asking people to draw on memory from what may or may not be the case. That's what I prefer to do. Okay? Everybody good with that? Okay, we good? Okay. So now we'll move on. So now we'll go to, uh, committee reports from commissioners. Who, who would like to go first? If no volunteers, I'll pick this in down here. Commissioner Carnard?
I have nothing.
No committee reports?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
Um, 4CF, uh, Community Charitable Foundation had a lot of activity this month. Um, we're, we went through grant approvals and we're also going through the audit that for the fiscal year that closed right before I joined the board. So I'm the chair of the audit committee for the board. So now I'm having to clean up the year before I was on there. So it's, this is.
That's a Christmas present. It's good to hear that.
I, I look forward to someday handing this board off in really good shape. And of course, I attended TDC and as an audience member. So that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Schlebach, any committee reports?
Yes, sir.
Nothing. Commissioner Carnahan?
Good.
Nothing? With all your travels about you, nothing?
I, I, I didn't go to FAC. At FAC, there really wasn't a lot there. I mean, um, so everything's really been done by telephone here lately. So, uh, yeah, no travels.
Okay, very good. Well, you gave me a couple of minutes to talk about a couple of things under my committees. First of all, TDC, uh, great, great group of people. Um, I had my last meeting as their chairman. Uh, as you know, I told them that I'd be stepping down from that and making recommendations for a replacement. And I just can't tell you, seven years that I was there, I don't think we ever had a split vote on any vote that we took. We always were, I think, unanimous. We discussed things. We vented, vetted things very well. And I know when I got there, there was a tremendous amount of distrust between the B O C C and the TDC. And, uh, the citizens were always trying to kind of backdoor the TDC and, and whatever. And now I think we have a great working relationship. I think the TDC takes their job very, very seriously and does not, um, recommend anything to this board that they truly haven't vetted. And I think this board has showed a tremendous amount of trust in them. And, uh, so I appreciate that. And, uh, lots of great people on that board who I'm going to miss. I mean, it's, I told them frankly that, you know, a lot of us don't travel in the same circles unless I end up in Dr. Desai's office someday or something. That might be a problem. But, uh, but, uh, but, uh, you know, I, I may not get a chance to work with them again. So I, I do, did appreciate that. And, and they, of course, did the obligatory lying about me and talking about what a great guy I was and everything. But we, but, uh, but, but anyway, that was good. Uh, we had, we used some of our, um, uh, special projects funding. What we asked John Pritchard to do is look for opportunities that aren't in the budget that, that come up that we don't know are going to be there, but we have a funding source to react and take advantage of that. And he's really done a great job, um, with doing that, bringing items to us. And we're getting a tremendous amount of bang for the buck for that. The other thing is, is that, um, our, our media company that we hired years ago is just doing an amazing job. Um, so, and, and it's, and it's in the numbers. I mean, just some real quick numbers. You guys have seen our, um, our yearly report and people see that saves the average, uh, person a couple of hundred bucks a year in their taxes. But this is what I tell people. When you see these restaurants coming here, our population hasn't grown that much. I mean, really, we've, pick a number, that seems to be what they do today, 145, 150, whatever. Um, so why the input of all the new restaurants and stuff? Well, I really believe the answer is the fact that we might have 150,000 people living here, but we had over 500,000 tourists come and visit. That's a tremendous customer base, uh, for these businesses. And I think that has a lot. I've mentioned this before. You guys know it too. If you've lived here a long time. When I first moved here, the restaurants closed in the summertime. There was not enough business wanting to stay open. So they just closed and, and so you had to kind of go to Ocala and places like that if you wanted to go to a restaurant. So I think tourism has a lot of unintended things that people don't see like that benefits. Um, so anyway, my hats off to them and the staff that we have over there now. Um, you know, I don't want to age myself, but I'll say some of these younger people we've hired, they are just so sharp with, with what they come up with. And most of us just sit there on that board and go, wow, we can't believe you figured this out and, and, and saw that. And in some ways, it's kind of scary, the information that we collect on people that, that, that we use for marketing. So anyway, hats off to the TDC. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. Uh, whoever the commissioner is that goes over there, I'm, I'm sure will do a fabulous job. And I've asked the board to support the new chairman in the same way they have me in the past. Let's talk a little bit about the TBRPC yesterday. It was pretty interesting. Uh, Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. It'll take me seven years to be able to say TBRPC real fast and know what I'm talking about. But I brought up a couple of things we talked about. If the board remembers, bless you.
Bless you.
If the board remembers, we had the discussion about the waterfront setbacks, remember? And Sean from the TDC was here, said they're working on this, this model draft ordinance. Well, they released the, the draft. And keep in mind, what this is about is they've been trying to work with all these experts and people in all these universities and stuff and look at things that are in common to all the coastal regions. And up to this point, they've really kind of been focusing on flood events or water coming in from a water body. Uh, I brought up the issue about waterfront setbacks. It had a lot for us to look at dealing with water quality and stormwater runoff. Um, so the first thing was pointed out to me, the consultant said the only county in Florida that they know that has, that is doing a special study on, uh, stormwater runoff is Martin County. So we might want to check into what Martin County is doing. Because I brought this up too. The other consultant stood up and said, I said, in Citrus County, it's 50 feet for this, 35 feet for this. Um, is there a magic number? And he flat out said, no, there is no magic number. You know, you have to determine what that number is based on competent evidence and, and what's brought forward. And that's when I asked the question, where do we get the evidence? You know? And so that's why Martin County was brought up. But they are going to go back and, and look at that. Because they said, it seems to me the issue you're dealing with, if you're dealing with a storm surge, and a lot of the talk was about seawalls, okay, or whatever. So if your neighbor's got a seven-foot seawall and your other neighbor has a seven-foot seawall and you have a four-foot seawall, it doesn't do much for your neighbors, right? So the concept is not everybody's going to have to go out and rebuild their seawall. But if we can all agree in a community that as you replace seawalls, they probably should be at a certain height. Okay? Well, my question was, if you're creating a seawall to keep the water out, or you're not keeping the water in, you know, from the stormwater runoff aspect of it. And so we got into that discussion. So I just asked them to delve a little deeper into it to see if there was some kind of science linkage between stormwater runoff and, and water intrusion or flood events or whatever. But I sent Randy the draft. I don't think there's much in there about stormwater runoff. But just so you all know, the, the concept of this is that there would be kind of a unified, um, basis regionally. And it's, and it's like, we always say, what are other places doing? This is always about what are other places doing? We, we'd be under no obligation whatsoever to accept what other people are doing. But I just wanted to let you know, it hasn't been forgotten about. They're going back and they're looking at it. That was, that was very, uh, very good. It's called the Resilient Shoreline Guide and Model Ordinance. Because I brought up the very things we talked about. Um, I, I specified if I want to put in a pool, that's an auxiliary structure, and I want to put it 20 feet from the water, and I get an engineered, signed, sealed, engineered stormwater plan that says this is, has a net benefit environmentally, why doesn't that fit what we're trying to do? And they said, it might. You know, so it, it tells me that the thinking is now out of the box, that, that they're, that they're looking at these kind of things. And I'll tell you this, they pay attention to what we're doing because people down there, especially these consultants, were coming up to me commenting on, you know, our discussion about that. So we did that. We elected new officers. Some of these folks you might know. The new incoming chair is Councilwoman Brandy Gabbert from the city of St. Petersburg. Very, very sharp person, very professional. Uh, it's going to be great. The new vice chair is Commissioner Vanessa Baugh from Manatee County, uh, one of my favorite commissioners from down south. And Mayor Woody Brown from the city of Largo has agreed to be the Secretary Treasurer, which means he's put, everybody's in rotation and moving up. So congratulations to them. On January 13th and 14th, Thursday and Friday, I'll be in Tallahassee for the Florida Regional Council Association's policy meeting. There's 10 policy, uh, 10 planning councils in Florida. And the planning, uh, council, which is three people, a commissioner, a city, uh, somebody from a city, and a gubernatorial appointee or make up the, uh, policy board. I'm the commissioner that represents that. And we meet in Tallahassee once a year to share that information. And finally, I got to ask you all about this, and I won't put anybody on the spot, but it may. I'm just curious about this because I was a little disturbed. Who from here represents us on the Sun Coast Transportation Planning Alliance that had a meeting on December 10th?
Sat down in Pasco County?
Uh, I guess. It was on December 10th, Sun Coast Transportation Planning Alliance.
I think, I think that was me from the MPO and I got the notice on December 9th.
Well, here's the only thing, and nothing against you, because they couldn't even answer when I said, because I said, and what this is about commissioners and public, is this is a letter that, that the president of, or the chairman of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council presented to us at the meeting yesterday, asking for us to approve the action that was taken, okay, listing the priorities, the funding, regional projects, a funding priority. And they list everything from Gibsonton Drive to Miami. And the Sun Coast Parkway appears nowhere on that list. So I asked him, why don't we put the Sun Coast Parkway on that list? I said, we need to let them know it's being built. We're asking for continual funding to do that. We're not asking for anything else to change. And, um, he said, well, you know, this is what the board agreed to and I'm afraid if you add something to it. And I said, well, it says right here, Citrus County supports this. But how come Citrus County's project's not on it? And he pretty much blamed you then for not, for not, for not bringing it up, you know? So, um, and then at the same token, even though the current chair said, nah, nah, I don't, and I understood. You know, he, he brought something forward and we weren't on it. But the, but the incoming chair and the vice chair both looked at me and said, it'll be on there next year.
Right, right.
So, um, I just think it's important. I don't think it's going to derail our project. But anytime a project goes forward listing the, the six counties' priorities, I think we should be listed on there as well. You know, and that, and that was all. So, and, and again, I said, who was it? Well, they didn't know. You know, so I said, well, that doesn't help me if you don't, if you don't know who the representative from.
It was, um, the ball, the ball got dropped at the MPO level. Uh, that I, I received notice, I believe it was on the 9th, the 8th or the 9th, that this meeting was going to take place. And I was out of town until the 9th and then responded and said, you know, I, I'm fully committed all day on the 10th. Can you find somebody else to go? And nobody else was available at that point.
Did you have to zoom in or whatever, or?
Couldn't do it.
So you went down to?
What's that?
You went down to the meeting?
No, no. I wa- I wasn't there. I was unable to, to participate.
Well, see, that goes back against what they said. They said somebody from Citrus County was there.
I don't know who went.
And that, nobody seems to know that either. I'd, I'd like to see the minutes from that meeting to see who from Citrus County was represented. Yes.
And, and I also sit on the MPO and they didn't ask me to be your alternate.
Hmm.
Just want to throw that out there.
The only reason I bring this up is, you know, I, I tried, believe it or not, I said, we won't make waves. We won't rain on people's parade. Uh, just keep this in mind for next year. But I said, if you're going to put Citrus County's name on, it starts Citrus, Hernando, Hillsborough, Manatee, Pasco, Pinellas, Polk, and Sarasota Counties, how come we don't have input from Citrus County on here?
Yeah.
And, um, so I know my colleagues. I know if they were there, they would have been going, what about our stuff? And that's concerning. So, so just, if you would, when you go back to the MPO, if you just make it clear to them, this kind of stuff. They might have the attitude saying, hey, it's getting built. It's funded. No big deal. We all know if we don't keep it in front of them, that, that's not the case.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Could we get a copy of that?
Of this letter?
Uh, yeah, especially to find out.
Sure. I'll ask Doug to, to make a copy.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So there we go. That completes committee reports, I believe. And, um, let's see. So Commissioner Carnahan has pulled his one item. Do you have anything else for discussion?
Yes, sir. No, we're good.
Okay. Commissioner Carnard, you got anything to talk about?
No, sir.
Second vice chair, Davis, anything?
Yes, sir.
First vice chair, Schlebach, you have an item on here to discuss.
Thank you, sir. And if I could, um, also have a couple of things to talk about after this, if you don't mind. So, um, I think, uh, once every new board, we, it seems like this goes back out there. I, I, I know that I watched many a meetings during the work ti- you know, I put it on my TV. I know a lot of people do that. If, um, I just thought it would be nice to bring it out there again, see if people will come and attend. Um, you know, I don't know how much of a commitment we have to make to this, but, um, I'd like to at least try to have an evening meeting so that people could come open to the public and discuss things with the commissioners and, um, get face-to-face. So I just wanted to see what you all thought about it.
Thoughts? Commissioners?
Yeah, I'll, I'll chime in. I, uh, when this was brought up, the la- last meeting or whenever it was that we discussed it, um, my suggestion was that we do one of our, um, retreats. We've talked about doing retreat more than once a year. Uh, because we can cover such a wide range of issues, um, I think that that would, that would encourage more public participation than, um, rather than just particularly what's on the agenda or what they want to get up and talk about for those three minutes. But each, each of the years that I've been here and we've done that retreat, we've talked about doing more than one in a year. Uh, maybe we do them semi-annually or maybe we do them quarterly. But my suggestion would be rather than having a regular meeting, um, where we're somewhat bound by, by the agenda, have a workshop, or not a workshop, do a, do a retreat, uh, where we've got a wide variety of issues we're talking about and then take, uh, public input, uh, at that, at that retreat, which we typically have not done, uh, at our annual retreat at this point. Uh, i- if we're, if we're wanting to encourage more public participation, which I think is the goal and it, and it's, and it's a good goal, um, then maybe, maybe that does it. That's just, I'll, I'll support what direction you want to go with it. But those are just my thoughts.
Any thoughts, Commissioner Davis?
Um, I applaud the line of thinking, um, from Commissioner Carnard. And I do think more than one retreat a year is probably a really good idea. I think functionally, to get Monday through Thursday after work hours is basically Tuesday night after our 501 concludes. I mean, that's, because of, um, the retreats typically what start at 9:00 AM and they go until 2:00 PM or whatnot when people are fresh. And we're trying to think about really big ideas and long ball thinking at those retreats. So, um, I applaud it, but I have a little, I kind of think functionally, the other idea works better.
Sure. Commissioner Carnahan?
I always talked about this a long time. I mean, uh, it just seems like no one shows up at, you know, later and later in the, uh, I know, I know there are sub-boards that do have meetings in the evenings versus having, you know, they alternate. But, um, you know, I, I agree with kind of, you know, we did talk about having these retreats, you know, uh, once a quarter and then maybe having the public, uh, maybe doing one of those in the evening. You're doing, doing a couple of those in the evening where people can show up and, and voice their opinion. But as far as just having once a month, I, I just don't think you're going to get the turnout.
Well, my, my thought here is, you know, when I first saw this, um, obviously the first thought I had is we've tried this before. It didn't work. But on the other hand, we've tried other things and we try them again. And new commissioners, I think, are entitled to have their ideas tried out, you know? But here's, I agree, the fact that the reason we haven't done this is nobody shows up. I can point to budget hearings that we have. We hold two budget hearings. We have an empty room. And the only time people show up to meetings, most of the time, is if they have an issue on the agenda they want to talk about. So my thought was, and here, here's the other thing. I think those commissioner retreats are set up to be a shirt-sleeve casual, even though we still can't get Randy not to wear a tie to one. Um, it, you know, it's supposed to be a sh- shirt-sleeve casual time where we can, like you said, spitball ideas. We don't take public comment because we want them to hear what we're talking about. But we don't want our flow of discussion and back and forth less formal than, than what we do here. So I would like us to not do that. What would you guys think about this? I think this, we could, I tend to lean towards, let's give it a try, but maybe do it this way. Maybe pick, um, start with one, pick a, you know, say the first quarter of the year, give people time to advertise. And then maybe we pick a night when we're here for 501s and we make it at 6 o'clock. We'll have a separate section of public input. I think that's what you're looking for is pub- because we, you, you want the whole board here so that the whole board can hear what they have to say. And if people turn out and the board feels that it's productive, we can do it. And then if the board says, hey, I'm not sitting around here till 6 o'clock for nobody to show up, then we don't. So what you thinking about that, Commissioner?
I, I like that idea. I like the trial basis because, um, you know, you know, the proof will be in the pudding who shows up. I, I also think that 6:00 might be a little late. So if we could do, you know, 5:30, try 5:30. I don't, you know, just sometimes those 501s go very fast. And I'd hate for us to sit here for an hour and then no one show up. And, um, especially during hunting season, we do not want that, right? So, um, so, you know, I love the idea of trying it and, um, you know, a couple of times and putting it advertising, but I would like it a little earlier.
Well, again, it's your agenda item. Uh, we, we can do it whenever you want. The only thing, just keep this in mind. The time certens. We cannot start before that time, but we can start anytime after that. So we, in my mind, unless the attorney tells me we can't, in my mind, we can advertise it at 5:15, 5:30. And if we get to it, then we don't. But if we have something that runs longer and they'll just have to know we have some business to finish up, that way we've covered both those bases. But I, I agree. I mean, why sit here for half an hour to see if anybody shows up or not if we can do? Ma'am Attorney, you got a problem with that? Can we? Can we advertise a final public hearing after, we'll call it open to the public, after public hearings on a, um, on a particular night of the week? You see what we're saying? I think what we're talking about is our regular agenda. We have open to the public, we recess, we come back at 501, we deal with these, uh, these 501s. And then we'll try it with one night, we'll add to that a five fifteen or five thirty, and we'll call it another open to the public.
Yeah, I, I think at first you said public hearing and then this time, okay, so, yeah, as long as it's just open to the public, that's fine.
And they can talk about anything. They can come up and like Commissioner Kennard said, no agenda item, they can just, whatever.
Yes, public hearing, it would have to have a, a thing attached to it.
I am. I, I had six, but the more I thought about it, I didn't have time to change it. I thought that was a little late.
What time would you like to try?
I, I, five fifteen, five thirty, uh, uh, five thirty probably would give people enough time if they were coming from Crystal River after work, so five thirty.
Can we schedule it also for a night? Do we have 501s?
Most definitely, yes. That goes without saying. Sorry, sorry.
Have we gone back to having 501s only at one meeting a month?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I, I like to do that, but staff pointed out to me that sometimes makes applicants wait and we don't want applicants to wait. So, I, I said, bring them forward, whatever, when, when they come in, bring them forward.
And there are a lot of applicants because development activity now is robust.
Yeah.
I tried that once before when I was chair and I said, let's just do it once a month because we only had like one. And sometimes they were only staff, you know, so it was like, add those on. So, yeah, so we do 501s as they come in. If, and, and you okay leaving it up to staff to when they should schedule that? We have to give enough notice. You want to.
Well, if you tell me a month, I mean, do you want to start in March? I mean, that gives you plenty of lead time. You want to start in?
February?
February. That's up to you.
February at five thirty, if there's a 501?
First meeting or second?
First meeting in February?
Sure.
Okay. So, everybody okay with that? We'll schedule a five, we'll schedule a, uh, additional open to the public after the 501s, first meeting in February. That's what we're agreeing to.
And this is going to be a test.
And we'll try it out, yeah. You get a room full of people and, hey, if they show up and yell at you, you may not want to do it again, you know, so.
I'm getting used to that.
So, you good with that? You happy with that?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Madam First Vice Chair, what else you got you want to talk about?
Okay. So, in the spirit of the new year, I'd like to try something a little different and have a discussion with you all, um, my colleagues. Because, um, this is the only time we can talk. And, um, that's been the biggest hurdle for me up here in my freshman year is not being able to talk to my coworkers. Because I got a lot going on up here and, um, my husband said he wouldn't last a day up here. So, I, I would like to be able to have conversations and, and encourage the conversations. And, um, so I have a couple things. The first being is Commissioner Kennard's Ozello project. I have spent two weeks mulling this over and, um, I support your intentions. I think that it's very forward-thinking, but, um, I could not at the time support using any general fund money or Duke dollars. I could never support that and, um, to purchase property. So, I've reached out to several agencies in Tallahassee. I've spent the last couple of weeks really thinking about it. And, um, I ca- I think I've come up with something that I'd like to propose and discuss with you all. My thoughts are that maybe we could get a commitment from, um, on your original proposal, you had your, 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 um, impact fees for parks, and then you had a hundred thousand for, um, from TDC, you were going to ask for commitment. And then eighty-five thousand from the Duke money. And the Duke money is what tripped me up. So, I was thinking, how do we propose going to TDC or, this is a discussion, education for me, and asking the TDC to pledge a hundred and eighty-five thousand instead of a hundred? And then, like I said, I have found grant money. Unfortunately, sometimes that grant money takes a long time and we miss the 2021 cycle. But, um, there is some conservation money out there, protection money of land. And again, I think it's very forward-thinking. I think in fifty, fifty years from now, somebody might even say you're brilliant for thinking of this, hopefully.
I wouldn't write that, man.
It might take fifty years, but it will happen. And, um, so.
Weston will say, you didn't know him.
So, um, and then if we could get a, start that conversation of how would we do that and get a commitment? And, and, um, I did find out, um, through my digging, through my calls, that there is a, and I'm going to need the help from you, that's why I want to have the conversation, um, that there is a special project fund with the TDC. And it looks like there's just over four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in there. And perhaps Commissioner Chairman Kitchen could give me some thoughts and tell me what, if this is a possibility, how would we do this? And, because I think you know TDC better than anybody.
Well, I just give the breakdown. As a matter of fact, I gave a brief history, as you recall, how we got to where we got to. Very, very generally speaking, we have two funds. We have one penny that's collected goes to the capital fund. As you know, I'm not a big fan of this project, but my recommendation would be is if you're going to go talk to them about this, you want to talk about the capital fund. Okay? Because this is going to be a one-time purchase, okay? That's what the capital fund was set up for. And I think we have about five hundred and some thousand dollars in. That's what the four hundred thousand for the bike trail came out of, okay? The special projects fund, that is, that is watched over like, you know, how, how can I tell? The whole reason we collect money and that the, that the people that collect it support it is so that we can advertise Citrus County. So, what was happening before is that we were collecting money, we were setting it aside, and we had this tremendous reserve growing. And what we said is, that's not doing anybody any good. We collect this money to spend it. So, we set up a policy that created a reserve fund that funds us in the case of a hurricane, pandemic, whatever, so our bills are covered. But as I said earlier, our director, sometimes people walk up to him with tremendous advertising, uh, processes. But if we're at a cycle, if the budget's already been passed, he'd say, well, I don't have the money, you know? It's, we set our budget or whatever. So, we set, really, when we do a true-up at the end of the year, the extra money that comes in, because remember, one cent that's collected automatically goes to capital. So, the money we're talking about is the money that after the budget, uh, after the reserve is met, that money goes to what we call special projects. And that way, if somebody comes in and says, well, it's not in the budget, but the state of Florida approached this and for fifty thousand dollars, we can do this. That's what the TDC recommends. Matter of fact, on the next, I think, agenda, you're going to have two requests to transfer money from the special projects fund to these marketing. So, just, just to give you an idea, i- if you're going to go to the TDC, i- if you're going to ask for this money, I think, I think you're going to have a better chance to capital, because that's what it really is, if you're, if you're buying this, than if you're, uh, going to special projects. When we helped Fish and Wildlife with the decorating their new Manatee Visitor Center, that money came out of capital, okay? Uh, I think. There, there's, it kind of overlaps. It depends if that was considered marketing or not. So, we try not to go to, to that fund for anything except marketing. But I do know that the, that the Bike Path money, uh, you know, came out of there. So, to answer your question in a long-winded way, it's much more complicated than that. But that's my, my, the smallest I can crank it down to is if, if it's not something that we're paying somebody with an idea that's going to put heads in beds that we can track and say, this brought them there. Dragon Boat races, right? We can say, Dragon Boat races filled up this many hotel rooms. We know that. So, that's the kind of thing that special projects money is used to fund. So, to answer your question, if you're going to go to the TDC with a proposal, um, that's what I would do. Also.
And I'm, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you?
Well, this might go back to what you originally said. To reconsider this, you could do it, okay? Anybody that was on the losing side of the vote could not.
Okay.
Okay, so just, I'm just reminding you that if you want to readdress this, you could. I did the same thing with Commissioner Card about the boat ramp fee. So, you know, they're so, you know.
So, my understanding is you're saying not the special project fund, but to the capital fund?
That would be, I mean, they can do what they want and you can do what you want, but you don't want to get the hoteliers upset with you because you're, you're going and spending money differently than what you told them to be doing.
And I, and it might not be necessary, but what I was thinking and mulling over is if we could get a pledge and give us enough time to get this conservation money. Because there is some money I was told from Tallahassee, yes, go to this, go to this. I sent it to Randy, I sent it to Maricel. Maricel did some investigating and it says, no, it expired 2020 or something. But then the person that's really running it says, no, that's, that's wrong on the website. It's just government and it's just confusing. So, I didn't want, um, I'm trying to just say, can we maybe make a commitment, uh, memorandum of understanding, something to say, we're, we're interested in conserving this, but we have to go through the process. And then hopefully you guys, and, and you did direct me on this, um, and just what did you think about it and?
Well, if you, this would be my, my thought. It's, it's your call. You, I would suggest if you want to move forward with this, you need to do what Commissioner Kennard did. Put it on the agenda, bring it back up, present your plan, your funding plan, um, and see if you get it to pass. And then, then you worry about going to the TDC. Because I was actually quite relieved that I didn't have to take it to him this month. And ask about it. But, but that's what I would do is get it back. Don't go to the TDC and ask for money until you know that the board's behind you, you know? But again, just like Commissioner Kennard did, figure out your funding plan, who's going to pay what, how it's going to happen. Because I can tell you this, what the TDC likes to do is to use and have their money leveraged. So, they're always looking for things where they're not picking up the whole thing, but it's, it's helping, you know, people do that, so. That's, that's my thought. Yes, sir.
First of all, Commissioner Schlebach, thank you. Thanks for bringing that back. And trying to find another way to get there. That's, that's what this has been about, uh, all along, is trying to ultimately, uh, get an absolutely incredible piece of property into, uh, the public's hands to be able to enjoy generations down the road. And thinking out of the box is what it's going to take to get it there. I wish that I had thought about just bumping it up to one hundred to one eighty-five and maybe we could have saved the vote then. Anyway, my, my suggestion would be just what Chairman suggested was, uh, bring it back as an agenda item, uh, to use the one ninety in existing park impact fees. Where I would differ is I would ask the board to put it on the TDC's agenda for a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Let the TDC board hash all that out, that they're going to pull it out of capital, that they're going to pull it out of, you know, special projects. So, they're going to pull, you know, eighty-five out of here and a hundred out of here, or whatever, whatever combination works for that board. As, as Commissioner Kitchen said, we've got a great relationship with the TDC. And even during our discussion during the last meeting, I didn't want to, I didn't want, i- if it did pass, I didn't want it to come across as a threat. Well, if they don't do this, we can do it. We want to anyway. That's not, that's not the idea. That doesn't forge better relationships going forward. So, my suggestion would be, uh, if you're going to put this back on the agenda to ask for one eighty-five from the TDC, let them iron it out, come forward with what their plan is, that, I think that would come back to us then. And once there is a, once there is a commitment, um, from the county in both the, um, the park impact fees as well as TDC money, uh, then we can, uh, I will be reaching out to private donors and saying, here's what's committed in the background and continue to work, try and get money out of the state. But I, um, I think we'll see some, some numbers materialize very quickly out of the private sector.
If you wish to pursue that, that line, which I think is an excellent course of action, if that's the way you want to go. And we'll get to this very quickly, who the next chairman of the TDC is, that's their job, okay? To participate in this discussion and take this discussion to the TDC board so that the TDC board has a clear and knowing that that liaison has to work with both these boards, uh, you know, for that very reason. So, um, and, and I think you're right. I think if, if you get down, we've done that before where we've had, where we've taken some from one account and some from another account, and we've done that very thing. What I think we have to do is that, I know what the TDC looks for. They look for leveraging. They look for precedent-setting, you know, is everybody else that has a project like this going to come and ask? So, you just have to address those when you make the presentation. And when it comes to the liaison, they'll say, this is, I'm bringing this to you from the Board of County Commissioners, this is their request. And then you get some action. And because I remember when Commissioner Carnahan was the chairman, he'd always look at me and go, what's the TDC think? You know, and that wasn't, what's their official action? It's what are they, you know, what, what is their thoughts on this? So, I, I would think that would be, if you guys want to go down that road, that's the way to do it, so.
So, the only other thing I wanted to talk about this is your ideas and if it's possible, um, the, when you're speaking and you're talking about the TDC, the one thing, where I had originally started and I kind of figured out that wouldn't work. But, you know, there's some, um, I reached out to Randy and asked him how much was in the boat, um, oh, my gosh.
Registration?
No, no, um, reconstruction, you know, um, fee. I forget what it's called though.
Ramp fees?
It's a boat, um, to, to restore.
Boater Improvement Act money? Is that what you're talking about?
I asked you how much was in it and, uh, it's just slipped my mind. I'm sorry, getting tired.
Well, you got a long way to go.
But there's some money in, um, oh, come on, you don't remember? Thank you. The Boat Ramp Improvement Fund.
And that comes from boat registration?
Yeah, that's registration.
Okay. So, I was thinking, you know, you could even make that area even a little better by, you know, saying to the citizens, okay, we're getting this investment in the private sector and we're going to do this with the ramps and get those, uh, redone and, and, you know, kind of bring it up a little bit because a lot of people complain that, you know, why would anybody go there? And just trying to make it a nicer, and I didn't know if that was something that, um, is even available for, what, what, what process? So, so what I'm finding out is I would just bring this back and, and for, on the agenda and discuss it, um, and see where we are. Or, or are we going to just?
Well, I think the first thing you have to do, my mind, is that you need to see if you have board support, um,
Okay.
to, to move forward with it. And if you do, it doesn't require a vote, I mean, you can put anything on the agenda you want. And it's just a matter of you think, you know, if it's, if it's worth the effort. If you think it's got a chance to pass and then push right on through. But if everybody up here says, no, I don't like the idea, then, you know, that's been our history is that, why, why do that if we don't think it's going to go? But seeing that you were the deciding vote, I think you should have a pretty good indication of, uh, you know, what the chances of this going are. The only thing that I, I would, um, point out to you is that, is, as Commissioner Kennard said, if you want it on the next TDC agenda, you can ask for that today. Um, and then at the next TDC, do we have time to get that on the next agenda? I don't.
If it comes today, we probably do. I'm not sure about if it comes the first meeting in January.
So, you could present it to the TDC saying that the, that the B O C C is saying, we're interested if the TDC thinks this is a good use of funding, right? And here's what our request would be.
And if they would pledge it?
And, well, I don't know if you want to pledge yet because they might not want to pledge it until they find. But you see what I'm saying? You got to start the dialogue. And when you go to the TDC, and I've been surprised, I mean, some of these, they might say, we think that's a fabulous idea. And there you go. Or they might say, eh, we don't think that's what we're all about. And that'll give you a good read. And again, like Commissioner Kennard said, you, you know, we have the final say, but that's not going to endear these folks to you if you're overruling them every time they, they send something. So, so anyway, if that's what you choose to do, I don't think it would hurt to, um, to, uh, have Randy talk to John or whatever the procedure is, is to get it put on that. And then you can either have the liaison make the presentation, or you could have Randy do it, however you want to do it, so.
So, I'm wondering if the board supports these ideas because I feel very excited about the conservation money. I feel very hopeful of the conservation money. And, um, if you guys could just, uh, let me know what you think.
I'll go first.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I, I, I think it's, I think what you've done and the same thing Commissioner Kennard did is admirable, what you're doing. I understand your reasons. I'm not saying they're wrong, I'm just saying I can't support it for three reasons. Same three, I couldn't before. We didn't do it for Homo Sassa. I think that's unfair to spend more, whether it's impact fees or whatever it is for, for this one and not for the other one. The other thing is, is it's not necessarily the buying of something, it's the maintaining of. And I just, I'm not a big fan of taking that kind of property off the tax rolls. We just talked about how we're not big government, how we don't, uh, need that. And if you, if you want more park space, by the way, I hate to pick in the Chronicle, but I believe the Chronicle said, uh, I don't believe in spending tax dollars on parks. Did Ann went up here, say, hear me say that?
No.
No, I think that's an outright falsehood. Uh, what I said is if we're, yeah, that, uh, I, I questioned the veracity. How about that? That was even a better. But, um, so here, here's the deal. But, um, so here, here's the deal. If we're gonna do parks and we wanna expand parks, I think they should be done in the central part of the county where there's more access to more people. We've talked about ball fields and so on. So, and again, it won't hinge on me, but I think I just, I wanna be fair and tell you, i- if it's your idea and you, and it passes and it moves forward, then that's the board's decision. And I will relay that to everybody that, that asks about it, but at the same time, I, I can't support it for those reasons. That's my feeling.
And Chair, I really appreciate that reasoning because I, I get that, and that's why I've been there. What keeps nagging at me is I think without, you might not even meant to do it on purpose, but the forward thinking of this keeps coming to me. In fifty years, will we look back and say, man, we missed an opportunity to conserve a part of Florida? And because I'm actually leaning more towards you, but I, so I spent two weeks fighting with the devil and the angel on my shoulders. And this is what I could come up with, and it, it's just, it's a, it's a hail mary. And if, um, if, if you all are okay, then I would ask that somebody go ask the, the TDC.
We'll figure out who that is in a few minutes. Yeah, um, well, you got anything, Nan?
It won't hinge on me.
Okay.
I stand right with you.
So, I think every, you, you folks know where Commissioner Carnahan, as of today, know where we stand, so the, the three of you wanna move forward? Yeah.
And real quick, I, you know, I mentioned conservative money, okay? I mean, there's a lot of land conservation money that we voted on your, uh, I forget what year it was, to, to buy all kinds of lands. And, uh, again, that's, to me, that's the way it was pitched together. Let's go get that money and let's buy a piece of property. If we do it that way, I'm okay with that, okay? But as far as, uh, any, you know, I, I stand with you, uh, if we go to the state and get that money, I don't have any issue with it.
Down this way?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, it sounds like you got majority.
I, I have some comments.
Okay.
I agree with, uh, Commissioner Slavat that that's why I voted for it was specifically because it's long ball thinking on what, what are we gonna look like in thirty, forty, fifty years? As far as the funding goes, I was delighted, it made it very unequivocal in my head to vote for it last time on, on the part of impact fees. Because those impact fees are gated specifically for that park district. That's also why I voted previously this year to combine all impact, park impact fees going forward, specifically so we can do big ball fields in the center of the county and do the kind of things that our youth needs. So, I'm very much in favor of that. I liked this before. Obviously, I voted for it before. I like it tremendously better with the direction that you're pitching. And I thank you for doing all the legwork to try to find some grants from the state because, um, that would make it really a, a very easy vote for me. So, thank you.
So, it sounds to me that you have the consensus of the board to, um, move forward with it. And, um, you'll probably wanna get that, um, out in front of the TDC to start getting some kind of response from them, which will kinda give you a no, an idea what, you know, what, what to expect from, from that. Yes, sir.
Okay, I got, just got a couple of comments on it.
Yeah. I, I thought you'd be happy with.
I am happy. Of course, I'm a yes. I love the work that's been done. I, um, I, I do think this is an appropriate use of, uh, of our impact fee, our park impact fee money. Expanding ball fields in the center part of the, of the county and so forth is also a good use of impact fee money, uh, for those districts. And now for our, uh, one unified district that we've got. In this situation, I, I, I feel like this is playing to our strength. Uh, our county, the strength of our county is the Nature Coast. That's our lakes, our rivers, uh, our Gulf Coast. Playing to our strengths, this is a, this is a golden opportunity to do just that. So, I'm, I'm in full support of it. I hate that we've got a, that, I know we're gonna have a split vote on it, um, but I, I, I like the idea and I hope it's successful.
Well, and, and my, um, capitulation on this is I'm not gonna keep coming back at you with the final word. I'm always gonna let you have the final word on this. So, so you, you have what you need then?
So, if you could just help me, like I said, I got a lot in my head. So, my direction would be that I ask, um, whoever is handling the chair of TDC to just bring it to them on the next agenda. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, what you're saying is you're looking for a hundred and eighty, as I read you, is it a hundred and eighty-five, a hundred and ninety? What is it?
A hundred and eighty-five from capital fund.
Now, you're looking for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, right?
A hundred and eighty-five thousand.
A hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar pledge or commitment, right? That's, that's really what you're asking for. Then you're gonna tell the TDC what it's for and where the rest of the money's coming from. And, and I'm sure that'll give them most of the information that they're looking for. And if not, they might have some, that's what they do. They might have questions. What about this? What about that? Their first question is gonna be, is it legal? Every request that comes to the, comes to the board is that, and we, we filter everything down from, uh, from that. Uh, usually Mr. McGee is our filter for that. He said, I helped write this law. I know what's legal, what you can use it for, what you can't. So, uh, yes, sir. You had a comment?
Uh, with, my suggestion would be that I'll work with Commissioner Slavat to work something up and then work with the TD, uh, C chair that you appoint to get it on the agenda for the first meeting in January.
Okay. You good with that?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And then after you get input from the TDC and you get all your data, then you can put it back on the board agenda and, and go from there.
Okay.
Sound good?
Thank you. Thank you for this. This, it makes, makes my, my, uh, I think this, this kind of conversation is just gonna make me a better commissioner and understand and get some of the voices out of my head.
Well, and I think it's important for you to understand is just because I don't, I don't agree in the fact that I might vote for it, I don't think you should be, um, uh, hamstrung from trying to get your ideas to move forward, especially if you can convince the majority of the board. That's, that's up to you, right? So, um, and since you made me the chairman, I'm gonna sit here and beat you up on what you decide to do, cause I could talk all day long and I'm not gonna do that. Wouldn't be fair. So, anything else?
Yes, thank you. So, the next thing that I wanna talk about and have a conversation about it is the routes that are proposed coming through our county. And, um, my thoughts are that,
Dealing with?
You know, there's a proposal of, um, the turnpike coming through and, um, possibly another northern connector meeting somewhere up the north part. I heard that, um, I can't even tell you where, who told me that, what told me that. But the reason I wanted to just have this conversation is that we will be attending the twenty twenty-two legislative days soon. And, um, if, you know, I know, I, I saw that Don Ellen did a resounding no. And I was under the impression that whenever the state decides they're gonna come through a county, they're coming through a county. But then I was, um, through my research, found out that if the county, um, is unified and says, no, we don't want that, that FDOT has to listen. So, that's why I wanted to talk to y'all, like, is that, is that something you're, uh, aware of? And if that's the case, I'm not asking anybody to say they agree or disagree with the turnpike coming through or the northern connector connecting. I just wanna have a conversation so that whoever goes and sits at legislative days before the Secretary of FDOT, that they, you know, can have these conversations of, well, where, where is Citrus standing? What, what is going to help and happen to our county? Because I'm really, really apprehensive about, um, historically, um, you know, I'm a native Floridian and I've watched, um, some of the vulnerable communities just get plowed through. And, uh, we have very environmentally sensitive areas and I wanna make sure that we protect it. We, you, the previous board to this board, the board before that, has made a tremendous investment into our economic development. And I, you know, I, I wanna protect that. I wanna protect what our citizens have invested into our, our community. And, um, just wanted to have that conversation, like, what is the steps? Because we, it could be very easy for us to say, oh, if that's twenty years down the road, let's let the next board handle that. And then the next board could say that, and before you know it, oh, there's this major thing coming through your county and might be cutting through some of the waterways or the, like I said, the vulnerable community. So, I just wanted to talk about that and see how we handle things like that.
Well, I could, i- if you're talking about the continuation of the Florida turnpike, right? The connector running from Wildwood to, to points west, okay? Um, I believe at least two of our commissioners here said on that MCORS board, so they should have excellent, um, that. I said on the MCORS, uh, board for the continuation of the Suncoast North. And I tell you what we're dealing with right now is rumor. That's what we're dealing with, okay? So, so what my feeling is, I've had some emails about people wanting the board to take a position. And I understand that, but my was, my question would be, a position on what? And, and what's it gonna be based on, you know? I mean, we've heard there's four potential alignments, but we heard that before from the other one, right? So, to me, I don't like to jump out in front of something and say, I'm for or against it until I hear what it is that I'm supposed to be for or against. And I can tell you, uh, between the three of us, we got accomplished what we wanted to get done with MCORS. We got the, the Parkway going to nineteen and Red Level. And that's because every meeting, when we talked to the secretary, he heard the same thing, no matter who he talked to, he heard the same thing. And, and that's what we have to do. We have to speak with a unified voice. So, either we have to be all in or not, and it's gotta be based on what's out there. And I, I just, you know, somebody said, well, there's two of the routes don't even come through Citrus, so why do you care what happens, okay? Well, we should because th- those routes could affect our area, but at the same time, roads have to be built. So, I, I think our position has been, we want in the loop. We want in the conversation. We don't want you to come to us and say, hey, we've decided to build a road. This is where it's going. Do you like it or not? And that hasn't been their practice, okay? Their practice has been to get out in front somewhat. And what I've responded, Commissioners, you don't get to see my emails, but what I've responded to people is, we're waiting for FDOT to finish their public hearings. They're out there gathering public input. So, I think we gotta wait for them to finish their public inputs. And you know the way MCORS did it. They collected all the information. They made a report. And if ten thousand people showed up against it and two were for it, that's what they'll report or whatever. But then we'll have that data. Um, but, but, and, and I think that's, that's what we have to do. You know, people are gonna say, oh, they ruined the community. I moved here to get away from my, I understand all that. But I don't think the Suncoast Parkway is gonna turn, uh, Citrus County into Miami. And, um, as it did, it didn't do that in Hernando or anyplace else. So, to answer your question, yes, I think, as a matter of fact, I said, my belief was, and I might've spoke out of turn, but it is the way we've done it in the past, is once FDOT gather, has their public hearings, they gather the information, I'm sure they'll come and make a presentation to this board. Because you are correct. My understanding is, is projects like this tend not to move forward without local support. And local support, I learned this from Dennis Tomato, means the Board of County Commissioners. So, and the reason when people say, hey, uh, I don't remember you all voting on this, I say, well, go back and look at the record. Twenty-two years ago, this was voted where the Board of County Commissioners say, yes, we're in favor of it, and that's where it went, okay? So, you're right. If this is something new, this board may be the one that people look back on twenty-two years from now and say, it was this or that. But I, I, I just like to gather all the data. I don't like to, you know, react to something based on a rumor that somebody heard or somebody said. And I know people are out there whipping everybody into a frenzy on, um, social media, which I'm pleased to say, I only know that because people tell me about it.
Yeah.
And so, so again, I think, it's up to you guys, but I think at this phase, we should keep our powder dry. We should collect data. We should hear, and always, um, uh, there's been ideas thrown out. Should we invite the Turnpike Authority or FDOT to come and make a presentation to us? Maybe at a workshop, maybe at a retreat or whatever. If they wanna do that, if they have information to present to us. But I don't see them coming here and putting the same slide up on, on the screen that they showed at the open houses. I mean, that's not gonna give us anything new that we didn't have. So, that's my opinion. I'm gonna jump down here to Commissioner Carnahan.
A year and a half, it's been on INCOR. And what, what do we get out of it? Throw it out, throw it out of window, okay? I, I, I think we, we take that advice. We need to sit there. Just cause you have a few people out there that's getting in a frenzy and working this up, we need to sit back and, uh, we need to.
Sit back and, and, and wait because, um, right now, there's four routes. Before it's over with, there might be six. Before it's over, it might be zero. They might say, heck, we're not doing that, okay? So, so I, I'm not gonna get out there and take a position at this point until, uh, you know, I mean, what, we spent a year and a half? And they wouldn't even talk about routes, would they?
Yeah.
Uh, on, on INCOR, they wouldn't even talk to us about routes. Um, you know, we kept saying, hey, we, give us some routes so we can start nailing things down, and they never would do that. But what we did is we beat the drum, get it to nineteen. It's already in Citrus County. It's already being built in Citrus County. We have to get it to nineteen. You can't stop it here. Get it to nineteen. That was the drum that we beat, you know, beat. What we do from there i- is, is we'll look at that then. But, uh, again, I, I think it's too premature to get out there in front and, and worry about some people trying to work this up and, and, cause again, they, they might throw four routes out there, then it might be six, and we have no idea where this thing is gonna go.
Let me hear what everybody else has to say, and we'll come back to you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I think, I think, um, that's, that's wise advice to, um, uh, take the, take this more slowly rather than responding to handful of emails or, you know, folks from out of the county, from around the state. We saw that on MCORS, um, that, that seemingly the loudest voices were from people who, none of these roads are going to affect. And I think it's important that, that we, um, not just this board, but I think our two cities. I think we all, we're all in this together and, and DOT's spending real money to look at bringing the Sunco, or the, uh, the turnpike, uh, from Wildwood to, uh, to the west side of the county or north of us on the, uh, on the west side. I wanna make sure, um, that we're all singing from the same page.
Right.
Uh, both, it's important to have both the cities involved. It's important that the county commission, um, uh, be participating, play, play a, a role in that, in that unified voice. And I, I don't think we're anywhere near ready to come forward with that yet.
Commissioner Davis, comments?
I think you gave great advice.
Well, I hope my wife is watching. Okay, so are you happy with that?
Yeah.
Well, we're listening. We're gathering data. We, we will, we will take a position in the future. We'll need to. But I think we, we all wanna hear what everybody has to say before we do that, so.
Well, and I really appreciate it. I already feel so much better about this because it did start with the emails. And then the confirmation was a quote that the chair said, that one commissioner can't do anything. I'm paraphrasing your quote. I'm butchering it, I'm sure, but.
That's, that's right.
And so then I was like, wait a second. I don't even get to talk about this. And that's why I said, I'm not looking for a stand. I just wanna have a conversation to say, um, so that the public also knows, this is early, w- we can't really make a stand. I couldn't just say that. I didn't know what to say to some of the emails. So, I really appreciate this so much and thank you.
I appreciate you brought it up because, like you said, you can't see my emails. We can't have this discussion. Now I got to tell you what I've been telling people.
Thank you.
If we're all on the same page, you know, we, we know, we know we're in agreement, so I'm glad you did bring it up. But, you know, I, I still remember, I'll, I'll never forget the night I laid there until ten-thirty at night with that earbud in my ear, listening to folks, and what they said is, from the very beginning, we were against this. And no matter what you say, it's not gonna change your mind. I go, then what did we spend a year and a half for listening to this, you know?
Well, it started at eight o'clock and went till, uh, almost eleven.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, well, thank you. Anything else?
One final thing. I just was wondering about this, um, you know, circling back about the, the, the beach mat. Like, do I need to, um, make some kind of motion to have staff start with a DEP permit? Or the assessment from DEP? Because we really can't do anything until DEP tells us what we can do, correct?
Uh, we're gathering, uh, we have some research. We're gathering the research and we'll be prepared to bring it back the first meeting in January, and then you can provide us the direction.
So, I don't have to do anything? Thank you.
And, and real quick with that, Randy, and we're gonna look at all the aspects of it. You know, it's a great idea, you know, things like that, but we still have to look at the liability issues of, um, with our insurance care. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, uh, we, we've got a survey of a number of counties in Florida and what they've done.
Okay.
Okay, we also have some concerns that have been expressed to us. A lot of those other beaches are manned with a lifeguard. What happens with somebody that's disabled if they run off of the mat? Who's gonna get them back on? Cause we don't have anybody there. Okay, uh, what happens if they, if they get to the water and they, again, can't get back or get stuck? So, there are a number of considerations to make, but we're putting all that together.
Well, what I want, what I want the public to know is, hey, I think we're all on board, uh, moving forward and trying to make something happen. But it's just not gonna happen overnight. It just doesn't work that way. Cause there's so many different elements to it that, uh, some might not be thinking of. So, I think that, you know, you give, give the staff the time to go look at all the elements to make sure all the bases are covered, uh, to make, uh, make it right.
Well, it's like the difference of between if, if you. Well, it's like the difference of, between if, if you have a natural body of water and people swim in it, that's easy, you don't have to have a lifeguard. But if you, if you construct a pool, you've created a constructive nuisance.
Right.
Okay, so therefore, you have a responsibility at that point to keep people safe.
Anything else?
Nope.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up. That's basically what I said to TDC, is that I think everybody's on board. Doesn't look like funding is the issue. It's all the details of the regulations and the what ifs, just like, like Randy said. Somebody mentioned to me, like, I didn't realize it, but people steal these things. You know, I mean, so who goes out and takes it up at night and puts it down and does all that?
Just like a Conch Creek sidewalk, and put a block in there where they can't use it.
I don't know if DEP will let you do that.
Okay, so let's see, anything else?
I am done, and thank you for indulging me.
Sure, absolutely.
Randy, real quick there, Mr. Chair. Randy, on that, do we have to go through a DEP permit in that, when it's our beach?
Yes, you do, but it's a question of how far you run it down to the beach, because you're permitted by DEP rules to run it to what's called the mean high watermark.
Right.
However, Mark Thomas tells me, there's not a mean high watermark that's been developed in that particular area. So we don't know what the mean high watermark is. That's the level that the water typically comes to?
Yes.
Okay, and there's quite a bit involved, more than I thought, with determining that according to Mr. Thomas. But yes, we would have to do that. The question I've got is, if you come down within 100 feet of the water, and you know you're not within that parameter, is that fine? But I, I don't know, for example, for this particular gentleman, does he want it to run all the way down the water so he can get in the water, or not get in the water? I mean, there's just a lot of questions.
Okay.
So that's what you'll do between now and the meeting in January. Try to get those questions asked and answered.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schlebach, anything else?
Thank you, thank you.
That's it? Okay, very good.
We get the pleasure of that.
Good discussion, yeah. Well, we've got a little bit to go here. This should be a little quicker. Okay, next item up is me. I have just the, the one item, talk about the board liaison positions, a little bit of history. My understanding is, and I always say this, because I know they will, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Attorney and Mr. Oliver, but our board chair does not have appointment authority. In other words, the chair does not say, you're on this, you're on that. What we have tended to do is, the board makes, the chairman makes recommendations, and as we always do, it takes a majority of the board to approve it. Have I said anything incorrect?
No.
Okay, so there we have that for historical reference as we move forward. Because a lot of people are confused about how, what the process is. So that's the way it goes. So, with that said, I asked Mr. Oliver to reach out to you folks, because my feeling is, I'd rather have you on boards that you're interested in, and that, that, that you enjoy being on, and that you have a tendency to excel at, which I think probably any of them would be. So, let's start with this, and you've, you've been given a list. Everybody has it in front of you. And when we're done, I'll read this for the public, so the people watching and, and listening will know. But there, everybody has seen the list of, of potential appointments. A couple of things I'd like to talk about. One is not on here. Commissioner Carnahan has been kind of the, I would say, the board liaison with the judges' move. If nobody objects to that, and he's willing, I'd like to see him continue to do that, since he's been there through that up to this point. Does anybody have a problem? I mean, it's not even listed as a liaison position. I think in my mind, once that's done, it's over with, right? So, anybody have a problem? Okay, so let's pencil in, you know, Randy, whatever you're calling that, the judges' relocation committee, or whatever, that, that, that Commissioner Carnahan will stay on that. Then-
Mr. Chair, real quick-
Yes, sir.
With, with that being said, Randy, I, I also think we need to move forward with a, putting a group together to start having a long-term conversation. Because, you know, what I read in the paper about the sheriff needing buildings and things like that, my number one priority is this judicial system. We can go out and we can arrest all we want, but if we can't deal with, these judges can't deal with them. I think that's the number one priority. So I think we need to get a, get the judges together, get a group together, and listen to sheriffs, and be more welcome to be part of that group. But I think that we need to start having a long-term conversation on how we're going to get this judicial system worked out in the long run.
Are you proposing a separate committee to do that?
Or, or, I, I mean, I would stay on that committee and, and keep-
And just expand what you're going to do.
Yeah, but I, but I think that needs to happen sooner than later.
That's fine.
Because the sooner we start having that conversation, and we start having, getting a plan put in front of us, because it's not going to, you know, it's going to take some serious money to get this worked out. And we've got to have a plan in front of us, a long-term plan, to do that.
So that said, then you're staying on as the Florida Association of County Board of Directors, Gulf Coast Consortium. We don't want you leaving the consortium.
I'm, I'm, I'm good.
The steering committee, the Small County Coalition Board of Directors, the Restore Committee, and the Hernando Citrus Metropolitan, the P, the MPO as the alternate.
Correct.
Okay, so you're good with all that?
Yep.
Okay, moving up the list here, then we have Commissioner Cannard. Is there any changes, problems, additions, deletions? You're, you're happy with those?
All good.
So we have Commissioner Cannard as the Citrus, Hernando Citrus MPO, which he currently serves as chair of. Keep Citrus County Beautiful, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, the With Lakucha Regional Water Supply Authority. I almost choked a little bit when I said that. Liaison to Congressman Daniel Webster, liaison to the Governor and Cabinet, and liaison to Senator Scott Marco Rubio. Okay, so then we go to Commissioner Davis. What I have here is the With Lakucha Regional Water Supply Authority, the Tourist Development Council Chair, that I, I, I think that you, you would be good at that. The Hospital Charitable Foundation, which I was excited to hear that you've taken over the audit committee of that. Yes, I'm sorry.
I, I, I think that's the wrong name for that.
What's that?
It is the wrong name. It's the Citrus County Community Charitable Foundation.
Founded, okay, so we got that. ForCF, but that's what that is, right? That you're on the audit committee? Or the chair of the audit committee, right? Okay.
Well, no, I'm the, I'm a member of the board. I additionally serve on two committees underneath that board, yes.
Right, but I was just listening to the audit thing, that was like-
Yeah, yeah.
All right, then we also have you down as the alternate to the MPO, the 911 User Committee, Medical Examiner's Office, Value Adjustment Board, Early Learning Coalition, and Small County Coalition Board of Directors as the first alternate. Okay, so here would be my question to you, and I guess we could also look at Commissioner Schlebach on this. I am on, as listed, as one of the Small County Coalition Board of Directors, along with Commissioner Carnahan. I won't be attending this last year of any FAC events where you folks do. So, are either Commissioner Davis as the first alternate, or Commissioner Schlebach as the second alternate, interested in moving up to be in the regular Board of Directors, and then the other person moving up to be the first alternate?
I'm very interested in that, sir, and I'm sure Commissioner Davis is also. I just, I don't know how you guys come to that.
I'll jump out there. I, I would like to see her, Commissioner Schlebach on that with us, because she does have some good relationships in Tallahassee that, you know, you know, that, that, that can be very helpful. Believe me, I, you know, I also sit on the executive board of the Small County Coalitions, and I was already up there for a week, hitting different House reps and senators. And I promise you, when you have a relationship with somebody, then you can't get in with the other one. You make that phone call, and they get you in with whoever you need to get into. So, it would be my recommendation to have.
Okay, so if your guys are okay with that, you have a comment? Because what I'm thinking, if, unless you object to it, we could make Commissioner Davis the board member-
You mean Schlebach?
And make, excuse me?
Schlebach.
Yeah, Schlebach, and Commissioner Davis, you, the first alternate, which you, that you are right now.
I think that that's a good plan. I am, I have big shoes to fill on TDC if that goes forward. And so, I, I talked to Mr. Oliver a little bit about this. There's another very important board that you sit on, that somebody needs to start studying for, to be teed up when you leave office. And so, hopefully, if TDC gets, you know, I've spent the first half of the year mastering that. The second half, maybe, I would be interested in taking another board position that you're vacating, so.
You mean like the TBRPC?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So, and that's, that's something that is very difficult, and a big thing that needs to be studied, and not just go in cold. Like, I went to many, many TDC meetings as well prior to this one. So, I would applaud Commissioner Schlebach, especially with all of her-
When we get done with this, would you remind me to come back to that? Because you raised a very important point, that I convinced the TBRPC to do yesterday, which will go to, to your point.
Okay.
Okay? So, if I'm reading this correctly now, so on Commissioner Davis, you will stay the first alternate to the Small County Coalition Board of Directors, okay? So you're happy then with those committees?
Yes.
That we've discussed. I think I read, read through them all.
I'd just like to point out to the people that call or write into the Chronicle that we only work for two afternoons a month, that I'm sitting on nine boards.
Hey, this, this is the same Chronicle, not to pile on, but this is the same Chronicle that people told me, they actually wrote, that we do not support law enforcement in Citrus County. Did you guys read that?
Yeah, well, I'm not bashing on the Chronicle. I'm talking about the people who write in or call in.
Right, well, I'm just saying, I was surprised to hear that we don't support law enforcement, and that we never have. I thought that was quite an interesting comment. So anyway, so we've covered Commissioner Davis. Now Commissioner Schlebach, we have you for Hernando Citrus MPO, Veteran Service Advisory Board, Public Safety Coordinating Council Chair, the Citrus Levy Marion Regional Workforce Development, Value Adjustment Board, the Tampa Bay Partnership, Transportation Disadvantaged Coordinating Council, and now the Small County Coalition Board of Directors, and we'll scratch second alternate. And the Fifth Circuit Justice Advisory Board. Any comments on those assignments?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, this, I asked about the Small County Coalition, I think that's important. I also think the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council is very important. And there'll be three of us that could possibly get into that. I just feel like, don't want to name names, Cannard, that there's only four boards, and that will be nine, Raleigh and I. And if maybe we could share the wealth a little bit in some of these boards. And I also thought that we took off all the liaison positions, because all five of us are really the liaisons. So, his liaisons might not really count.
Right. So there you go, see, so you adjusted that, so.
So I would like a little help in-
Well, let's back, well, let's just back up. What of these boards, is there something you would prefer not to be on? Because, I'll give you an example. Some of these boards were required to have members on, and some are, were not. You know, we do it because we want to. The Tampa Bay Partnership, what, I mean, is that something that we're required to be a part of? Nobody's really fully explained to me what value we get out of that, other than it's like an extension of the Chamber of Commerce in the Tampa Bay area. I mean, so, if somebody was standing up here today, could they tell me what benefit we derive from the Tampa Bay Partnership?
Who was on that board before?
I don't know, who was on the board?
I've never been on that one.
I don't either. So there we go, I kind of might have answered my question.
Okay.
So why don't we scratch you from that, until they call up and want to know where you are, and then we'll find out what it is they do.
I'm ha, and, and I also want to put in there that, you know, I'm on a NACO board now. And, you know, so, yes, so I, I'm feeling like, what is the most important out of that? I, I'm having trouble with the Fifth Circuit Justice Advisory Board even getting to that, because there's always been a conflict with another board that I've been on.
Wasn't that the Public Safety Coordinating Council?
No, you, you had to do that. I did make that, I actually enjoyed that board, and it wasn't that hard. So that one is kind of like one of those, it doesn't take much effort. But the, the last one, the Fifth Circuit Justice Advisory Board, I've just had, I mean, really conflicts with that, with the other boards getting on it.
Is that something we're required to have somebody on?
I don't know what that board is.
The Fifth Circuit Justice Advisory Board? Do you want to know what that is?
I don't know what that is, no. But Commissioner, I think you meant to say time-consuming. What did I say? Harder. It, it's, it's, it takes a lot of time. Time-consuming, there you go. I don't know what that board is. A lot of commitment. It's, it's all been Zoom, and, you know, even the last couple have been a conflict with meetings. It's with the, the justice system. And I think Jimmy Smith was very involved in that one. And I don't know if it's, it's mandatory. Who, who's on, who's, who's there when you- There's so many, I mean, there's like- Is it like probation and- It's, it's all different agencies and juvenile.
A commissioner needs to be sitting on there.
It's, it's, it is, you know, for sure that it's a-
Okay. Okay, so-
Well, I, I, I would like to throw that ball down there.
Well-
Take whatever board you don't want.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, listen to that. It's the Christmas season, you better start passing them down there.
And again, I might, I might be saying something totally insulting by saying, I don't know what the Tampa Bay Partnership does. I, I remember I was lobbied from them one time when they took citrus out of Tabarta. And they called up and said, are you okay with that? Because I guess they were behind getting citrus taken out of Tabarta. And I said, as long as we're still in the MPO, and Hernando County is part of Tabarta, I don't have a problem with it. That's my only interaction ever with the Tampa Bay Partnership, so.
Well, I, I think if, if, if Commissioner Cannard would take the, the Fifth Circuit Justice Advisory Board, and then we find out the Tampa Bay Partnership doesn't require it, I'm going to be sitting pretty.
Okay, so you're good with that?
I'm fine.
You're only going to pick up one? Okay, okay, so I've read off what, what you're doing there, and you're good with that. Are we getting these corrections as we go through here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, if you want to know, I've got the Tampa Bay Partnership, I Googled on it. The Tampa Bay Partnership is a coalition of regional business leaders joined by our shared commitment to improving the personal and economic well-being of Tampa Bay residents.
There you go.
And I don't see where it says, it has to be an elected person on that, so. So let's scratch them off our list until they come back and tell us why we need to be there. How's that? And Commissioner Cannard is going to take over the Fifth Circuit Justice Advisory Board.
Do you want to just leave it and let me try it, and then see if it's worth anything?
It's up to you.
Yeah, I just need help with maybe that one.
Okay, well, you decide, your call.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We won't, we won't ding you if you don't show up, and they say, you know, I need to go. Okay, so this, this, a couple of things under me I just want to bring up. Let me start with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. The, it is, we just had Sean Sullivan gave the annual report. Took him about 10, 15 minutes, and he was going quickly, talking about all the things that were done this year. And when I got on that board, I've been on that board for seven years. I'm the original appointee from Citrus County, Commissioner Carnahan, remember? We used to be in the With Lakucha Regional Planning Council. They did away with that at the time, remember that? And the board was thinking about, no, we want to stay in north, go to Ocala. The governor wanted us to go to south, to be in Tampa. We decided to give Tampa a try, and it worked out great. It's kind of like, we're like the, this, this, we have like a rich uncle. We're the smallest county, we pay the lowest dues, but we get the same benefit that every, everybody else gets. So, with that said, it is a huge, the board is made up of 45 people. It's six counties, 30, 27 municipalities, including Tampa, St. Petersburg, or whatever. And then there's gubernatorial appointees. So, it's a big board, they do a lot of stuff. My first six months there, I sat quietly, I was totally lost. Everything was so far over my head. I went in and had a meeting with the executive, a different one at the time, because they hired a new one. I went in and had a meeting with the executive, a different one at the time, because they hired a new one. And after my meeting with him, I was just as dizzy as I was before I went in. So I made the recommendation to the new incoming chair that they hold a new member orientation day. And when somebody gets appointed to that board, they go in for a day, you know, they give you breakfast or lunch or whatever, and you sit around at a big table, and they, they bring each person in from each department, they tell you what they do, what the benefit that that is, how it works, and you get to ask questions. So everything they bring up, you don't look stupid because you're asking a question about it, okay? And not only was it resoundingly everybody thought was a great idea, but a gentleman that had was appointed five months ago has been on the board, he goes, I'm going to be the first guy in that class. So that goes to what you were saying, because it's just, you know, impossible to walk in there and then in a couple of months pick up everything they do, because you get a different report about something every month. So, like, we have commission reports, but imagine if we were only getting one report a month from each one of us, how long would it take to circle through everything that we do? So to that, to that effect.
When is that next orientation?
Well, they haven't started yet, it's a brand-new idea, I just, I just threw it out there. So, um, I asked them, I asked the new chair if they would task the director to form, formulate that and put it together. And first they said, well, we can, we can do a little, um, you know, Zoom. I go, no, no, it's got to be something where everybody sits around the table, like at FAC with, you know, and you have, you share ideas and you ask questions, and, and you learn from the questions other people are asking. So that, that should happen, and when my term is up here, um, I said, and I was thinking about that. I don't know who you guys are going to decide who the next chair is, is going to, to ask to go down there, or who's going to volunteer to do it. But I thought about that, it's, it's a, it's an overwhelming assignment, and people need to do what we can to get everybody up to speed to do that. So whoever it is, think about me if you go to orientation, so.
The, the three of us might have to do rock, paper, scissors.
Okay. Okay, so with that said, here's the final thing that we need to determine. Oh, by the way, the Joint Governmental Group, I want to mention that real quickly. We really haven't met this year for this reason. A, I'd say COVID, because when everybody was coming in here, they wanted us to be in a small room and some of the people weren't comfortable with that. But it started reaching into where it was staff showing up instead of the elected people, and I've already addressed that. You know, I mean, staff can get together and talk anytime. So I kind, I kind of held off on that until I saw how the, how the, um, summit goes in January. Bless you, and if they want to, they want to redo that or start again, I'll be happy to stay on that if you guys want me to, or if somebody else wants to step in and do that. To me, the key is, is just keeping the dialogue. We were meeting once a quarter with the, it was the mayor of Crystal River, the president of the, um, Emirunis Council, and the chairman of the school board, and the chairman of the county commission, that's where it started. And then, and then when these other gentlemen were chairman, they asked me to stay on it because I had been on it. So, um, so I'll, I'll pursue that. Here's where we hear, here's where, talk about being overwhelmed, Commissioner Slaybaugh, I don't see you stepping up for this one.
With the, with the joint.
No, no, this is the canvassing board. Here's the list of meetings, okay? So here's the good news. I, I will be on the canvassing board, as you know, I, uh, they want somebody who's not up for reelection and who is not going to be politically active. And that really means having your picture even taken with a candidate, because the canvassing board are the folks that count the votes and ratify the votes. So with that said, I will, I will be the member. Uh, I, I, since you guys changed the schedule today, I don't, I don't have a problem with meetings, but they want an alternate, Justin. Weren't you, you were either on or an alternate?
Uh, I think it was an alternate.
Okay, but the, what they want the alternate to do is go to the canvassing board meeting, that's virtually all day in Orlando, March thirty-first, and to the orientation meeting, which the time has changed, which is June second, from eight-thirty to like twelve. So that's all you're committing for is the alternate, but knowing that if something happens to me and I can't make a meeting, then you need to start going to all these meetings. So with that said, is there anybody that would like to step up and volunteer to be the alternate on the canvassing board? Somebody does one of these.
Somebody has nine boards.
Again, the only thing that looks like it's going to be required is, is that myself, um, obviously I'm already on there. Commissioner Carnahan could do it, um, but I don't.
I'm going to opt out of that one.
But I don't know what his intentions are, and I'm not going to ask him to, to state his intentions. So, um, that would come down to the three remaining commissioners.
You can put me down for it.
For alternate?
Even though my truck I broke into the last time I went to Orlando for that.
Can we get a county car to, uh, no, I'm serious, because I asked the supervisor, she was transporting us down, she goes, oh, no, no. You know, so, uh, maybe the attorney needs to go with us too, so, or an A. attorney. Because if he and I ride in the same car, don't we need somebody there to make sure we don't talk about non-county?
Needs a chaperone. I, I get very carsick, so I would ask if I could always drive my own car.
Well, I would, but I don't want to, I don't want it broken into like Commissioner Carnahan asked.
We can trust you guys not to talk business.
Well, we can, I, I can, I'm just, I'm just running by you. I would prefer that if we, we took a county car, we could go together, we can put a tape recorder on, whatever we have to do or whatever, you know.
I can promise you, there's plenty of other commissioners that ride together.
Yes, 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 so.
I have gone before, I don't know if the new supervisor is going to want me to go, Susan Gill sent me years ago, I think I remember it.
You weren't, you weren't, I, I just volunteered you as a chaperone, as a chaperone for us, that's all I was saying, so.
I've, that's so odd, I've never been asked to chaperone.
There you go, so I'm just, just trying to stay above the, you know, the controversy. But anyway, we have that answered, we'll work out the details, it's just in March, as you know, to go down there. So thank you, Commissioner Kennard, appreciate you.
That was, that was funny, I don't care who you are. No, shotgun. He's calling shotgun. No, no political.
Three months in advance.
No political activities, that's the important part.
Okay, so Commissioner Kennard, here's what you need to know, Doug has the paperwork. There's a hundred-dollar fee that the supervisor is, is paying for out of her account, which really we're paying for, it's going back to. But anyway, she's going to take care of all the registration and paperwork, and we'll, we'll work out the transportation by, by March, okay? Doug and Doug will get the package to you. Thank you, Commissioner Kennard, other commissioners, I hope you're happy with those assignments. Are we clear? Everybody's clear, I've been scratching and writing. So if we are, I would like a motion to approve the board liaison appointments as modified.
Real, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Um, you need to put me down as the, um, two things, a budget finance on Gulf Coast Consortium Chairman.
Oh, okay, okay.
Budget finance on Gulf Coast Consortium Chairman, and then also Executive Committee on Small County Coalition.
Very good, so.
Just what we got.
And you're on transportation one, too.
Okay, budget chair, we got those, Randy, got those?
I do.
With FVC.
Yeah, but that's.
And whoever updates the website, you're going to have some work to do now. To change all, and, and again, just so you know, I think you guys think I'm getting off easy because, you know, I don't have the big list, you guys do. But I just told Doug, I, I just burnt, put seventy bucks in my truck from driving down to Tampa, you know.
And Chair, I'm sorry, I did not think you were getting off easy because you're the chair, I just thought someone else was.
Here, here is.
I think she just backed up, she threw you under this time, she backed up.
But here, I'll give you.
I was riding shotgun, no.
There's, there's a, there's a lot of things, not just me, that's published, you know, not just me, but other commissioners do as well. Commissioner Carnahan just mentioned a couple, this morning I had to be on the entry, um, conference for the audit. You know, so the chair sits in on the entry and the exit, and there's all that kind of stuff that comes on all the time. So, yeah, we're, we're here more than a couple hours a month, you know, so. So now, is anybody ready to make, did, were you going to make, uh?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion, so move, uh, on the appointments of, uh.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Carnahan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Any public comment on these? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, and that passes unanimously, thank you very much, commissioners.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, Madam Attorney, you got anything for us?
The only thing I have, because I will get scolded if I don't tell you, Mr. Chair, is we do have a plat for your signature upstairs.
Okay, great.
Speaking of things you have to do.
Okay, Mr. Oliver?
Yes, I have one thing, uh, we, we've got great staff. Uh, I am advised, Joanna Cato advised me that the February eighth meeting will be a long meeting in the evening, because there are some.
Okay.
Resonings, so she is recommending that it be done on the twenty-second, which we believe will be much later.
Are you okay with that?
If that's okay, we'll do it on the twenty-second.
Okay.
Aye.
Let the record show, the board's okay with that. Anything else, Mr. Oliver?
No, sir.
Okay, um, we're going to go open to the public, just so folks know, then I'm going to announce upcoming meetings, and then we'll have a recess until the five-oh-ones begin. So, um, with that said, we'll open up to the public, is anyone here like to address the board this time? You folks know the routine, give us your name, please.
John Labriola in Vanessa, just wanted to thank Chairman Kitchen and the board for agreeing to finally place the, um, item that, um, I brought earlier on the, uh, on a future agenda. Uh, just wanted to find out, will that be the first meeting in January, just so I can let the people who are interested know, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Leland Ship Floral City, uh, I just wanted to say I appreciate you guys supporting the Bruce Titus Project. I will tell you that my team is working right now with some disabled betting groups, some ADA organizations to, uh, and also other counties that have done this project or similar to, to get through some of that red tape Mr. Oliver and y'all brought up. So, uh, and I'll partner with Commissioner Slaybaugh and let her know anything I come up with that looks like we may have trouble. Uh, and, uh, again, Merry Christmas to you all, and thank you for your time.
Merry Christmas to you too. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Oliver, when did we say we might get that on? You going to, going to meet with Eric and see if we can get that resolved, or are we going right to the agenda item? I think that's what we decided.
No, go right to the agenda item, I think it's a policy decision the board needs to make.
So you think that'll be the first or second meeting in January?
I'd make it the second, so that we can get the background all put out there.
So we're shooting for the second meeting in January, that's where we're going, depending on what we, what we get put up.
We'll make that, I'm not worried about that.
Okay, all right, so there's no other public, uh, open to the public, let me announce the upcoming meetings. Our next regular meeting is January fourth next year, ladies and gentlemen, two, twenty-two, at one o'clock. Uh, in this, in this meeting, all these meetings are in this meeting unless I, uh, this building, unless I say other words, this room. Regular meeting, January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, uh, regular meeting, February eighth, twenty-twenty-two. In case I missed some of you in the audience, between now and the end of the day today, wish you all a wonderful Christmas, and we'll see you next year, and board, I don't see any other business till our five-oh-one, so we're recessed.
I'm advised that, uh, Eric Head can't be at the second meeting in January, so we'll do it at the first meeting in January.
Okay, very good, sooner the better. We're hearing, commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Based on competent and substantial evidence, I make a motion, we authorize the chairman to execute the First Amendment to Development Agreement for DA dash twenty-one dash zero-one.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Commissioners, um, and that would also include findings of fact, I'm sure.
Findings of fact, yes.
Yes, okay, all right, so, uh, any other discussion, commissioners? Any questions, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that passes unanimously. Again, this goes without saying, we appreciate the job you, you know, being a good corporate neighbor in our community.
Thank you, it's, it's mutual, appreciate it, Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Thank you for the investment.
Take care.
Next up is the five-fifteen, CPA, AA, PUD, twenty-one days, one-one. I see the applicant is here, so.
Good evening, and Mr. Chairman, members, uh, for the record, Clark Stillwell, three-twenty South Highway forty-one, Bank of Emirunis Building in Emirunis, Florida. This is the final hearing on this three-part application. Earlier, six weeks ago, four weeks ago, you transmitted this Department of Economic Opportunity for review. Let's briefly just look at their comments coming back, we had no comment from FDEP, we had no comment from the Florida Department of Health or SWFMD. The Department of Transportation sent a letter, but said they had no issues. Florida Fish and Wildlife said a long letter, said there's a potential list of, uh, species there that all, we should be concerned with about, uh, development of this site. And, um, and in response to that, I would say, your code answers those questions. This is a development over two acres, yeah, any development on it, whether it be industrial or commercial, will be required to have a professional biological survey done, and they will address all of those issues created by Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission. So what are we asking for tonight? Comprehensive Plan Amendment on approximately sixty-five acres, twenty-five acres more or less into commercial, forty-five acres, there's twenty-two acres commercial, forty-four industrial. On the industrial piece, which is the piece for LKQ to expand on, we have a PUD on top of it. Within the framework of that PUD, we ask for two deviations from the setback, and we base that upon the historical, uh, use of the, uh, LKQ piece to the west, which had no impacts on abutting lands to the south. You got a seventy-five-foot buffer, you do, you have a wall. The industrial use proposed through the PUD is no more than parking of cars till they're ready to be moved off-site. There was no public opposition at the Board of County Commissioners meetings, at the PDC there were questions, they were answered. We would like to have this approved and move on.
And if, this is the adoption phase of this, this is the same application we've seen in the past.
Exact same one, I didn't go through the PowerPoint, but I'd be glad to.
That's okay, our memories aren't that bad, I don't think so. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Staff ready for their presentation?
Yes, sir, and did we need to read the ordinances?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't introduce my clients.
For the preambience?
If you're in the back of the room, I'm sorry, thank you.
Welcome. So, did we read the ordinance that we?
We did not.
Okay, you want to do that?
Mr. Stillwell was a little anxious.
I know, and this was a long day too, so. You want to read that now?
Yes, sir. At the conclusion of this hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, mandating the Citrus County Future Land Use Map by re-designating approximately seventy-two acres from the low-density residential district to the general commercial district and the industrial district, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And secondly, an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, mandating Citrus County Land Use Atlas Map by re-designing approximately twenty-five-point-six-six acres from the professional services office district and the low-density residential district with mobile homes allowed to the general commercial district, and by re-designing approximately forty-six-point-forty-four acres from the low-density residential district with mobile homes allowed to the heavy industrial district, with a planned unit development for open space for auto salvage, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am, staff ready for their presentation?
Yes, sir. Mr. Stillwell did a pretty good recap of what this application was for. This is the adoption phase of this, nothing has changed since the last time you saw the transmit.
Is your microphone on, or is it just me? Okay, okay.
Yeah, I don't have a lot.
That's right.
We did transmit this to all appropriate state agencies on November second, and we did receive some letters back. But none of the letters had any objections to this, so.
Okay, commissioners, any questions of staff? Okay, does the applicant have any questions of staff?
No, thank you.
All right, so let's move on to the public hearing, and we'll open us up to public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is anyone to speak in favor? Third and final time, anyone to speak in favor? Is anyone here opposed to this application? Anyone opposed? And third and final time, anyone opposed? So we will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Based on the facts and the findings, substantial evidence, I move to approve CPA dash AA, PUD twenty-one dash eleven.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Carnahan, a second by Commissioner Davis. Board, any other discussion, any comments? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that passes unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Merry Christmas to you. Okay, T-five, CPA dash two-one dash one-two. Is there anything we need to read for this? This is, this is.
Yes, this is that. This is an ordinance, but it's not quasi-judicial, so.
That's good.
At the conclusion of this presentation, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, mandating the Citrus County Comprehensive Plan by creating a new private property rights element, which will be Chapter Seven, including corresponding goals, objectives, and/or policies, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date.
And the county is the applicant, correct?
Yes.
And this is, and this is the adoption phase, correct?
Correct.
So we've seen this before?
Right.
Has there been any subsequent changes?
There have not, we added as additional items, didn't realize it was in there, but the DEO, DEO did send us a letter saying they had no comment. So that's in there as additional information, and we did transmit this to state agencies, there's been no change since you reviewed this in October.
Uh, commissioners, do you want to revisit this and hear the presentation over, or are you good with what we heard the last time?
I'm good.
Okay, we're good with that? Okay, so we'll have a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in favor? Third and final time, anyone in favor? Is anyone here to speak opposed to this application? Anyone opposed, third and final time? I know it seems silly, but it's the law and we have to do it, right? So, okay, so we're going to close the public hearing, commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Okay, Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Slaybaugh?
I move to approve, adopt, and authorize the chairman to execute the ordinance for CPA dash twenty-one dash twelve, private property rights element, Chapter Seven, and direct the clerk to execute the ordinance based on competent and substantial findings and fact, evidence.
Evidence and findings of fact.
There you go, we're getting it, see, this is good practice for us all, another, not too long, we'll have this nailed, so. Okay, so we have a motion, uh, by Commissioner Slaybaugh.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Davis. And we've had our public hearing, commissioners, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, that carries unanimously, thank you very much, staff. Ladies and gentlemen, have a wonderful Christmas, if we don't see you, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, you did a good job, Merry Christmas.